Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. But everybody, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Aleni and Amalia Flengas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Flengas.
I'm here.
Vice-Chair Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Bonar.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and the review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to answer them. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a very smooth meeting. Thank you for your attention on that. Going into item number four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time a single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of this agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five. This is to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meetings of December 10, 2013, and the Planning Commission meeting of January 14, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, Doug Rankin here. We need to hold the January 14, 2014 minutes in abance. They were not ready for review at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion as to the minutes for the Commission meeting of December 10, 2013.
Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of December 10, 2013.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to approve the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of December 10, 2013, is approved. Move on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items that Commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, we have a request for an abance for item 41, ZON 52391, item 42, VAR 52392, and item 43, TMP 52393, to be held to the March 11 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Does any member of the public want to be heard on those three items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion comment for that. There is one other housekeeping item. Right after the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, we'll start off at the public comment portion with item number 49. And so Commissioner Moody, if we could have a motion as to the housekeeping items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion is to obey items 41, 42, and 43 to the March 11, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the consent items portion of the agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a Commission member or an applicant so desires. We'll begin with item number seven, which is ANX 52272. The applicant owner is Esteban Perez for possible action on a petition to annex 1.91 acres at 3031 Corran Lane in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item number eight, which is EOT 52239, applicant owner is True Love Baptist Church for possible action on a request for an extension of time of a previously approved site development plan review for a proposed 5,445 square foot addition to an existing church/house of worship at 1941 H Street in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Does any of the Commission or the applicant wish to be heard or speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Moody?
Motion is to approve items seven and eight on the consent items of the agenda.
Motion to approve items seven and eight carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number seven will go forward to City Council in ordinance format. Item number eight is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We're now on the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. I'll start now with item number nine, which is SDR 51931. The applicant owner is High Fives LLC for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a one-story, 7,675-square-foot medical office building with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer where eight feet is required for a portion of the east and west property lines at 2480 Professional Court in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 10, MSP 51851. The applicant is DTG Las Vegas LLC. The owner is 220 North Fourth Street LV LLC et al. For possible action on a request for a major amendment of an approved master sign plan to add one freestanding sign and increase the area of an approved wall sign at an existing hotel/casino at 2006 North Third Street, 221 North Third Street, and 220 North Fourth Street in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 11, VAC 51781. The applicant owner is D.R. Horton, Inc. for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 30-foot-wide portion of Haley Avenue and U.S. government patent easements generally located at the southwest corner of Darrell Lane and Yula Street in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 12, which is VAR 52347. The applicant owner again is D.R. Horton, Inc. for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 3.5-foot side yard setback where five feet is the minimum required for a single-family dwelling at 6187 Maxmar Court in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13 is SUP 52351. The applicant is Aladdin Bail Nevada, Inc., or excuse me, Aladdin Bail NV, Inc. The owner is Garses Venture LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed bail bond service at 626 South Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward 3, Councilman Kaufman. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14, which is SUP 52371. The applicant is Aaron Lulling. The owner is Proview Series LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 7,508-square-foot tavern limited establishment use with ancillary brew pub at 10 East Charleston Boulevard in Ward 3, Councilman Kaufman. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 15 is SUP 52384. The applicant is LV Stake Holdings LLC/Village. The owner is Trails Village Center Company for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,865-square-foot beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed restaurant with outdoor seating at 1910 Village Center Circle, Suite Number 1, in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 16 is SUP 52420. The applicant is PLKNV, Inc. The owner is Clark County Credit Union for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a drive-through facility in conjunction with a proposed restaurant at 7065 North Durango Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Is there any of the Commissioners or member of the public wish to have any of these items pulled?
Chairman, I'm going to abstain on item number 14, seeing as how I own an urban lounge within the notification area of that particular application.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also going to abstain on item 14 because I do own property within the notice area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners have anything?
I do, Mr. Chair. Item 15, my law firm represents the, or has represented, the owner, so out of an abundance of caution, I'll abstain on item 15, but we'll vote on the others.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, sir, if you'll state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farla, 240 North 19th Street. On item number 14, 10 East Charleston. On the south side of Charleston there, we have Walgreens, and on the north side, there's an old filling station, and next to that, there's a little psychic shop or something. Where are they going to get 7,508 square feet in that?
Are you asking to have this item number pulled?
I'd like to see it on the map, on the board here, because I'm just wondering where they're going to get a building this size. Is it going to be a new building or what? I don't even have a problem with the use. It's just that I can't figure out where they're getting that kind of space in that old filling
Mr. Chairman, through you, just to respond to the question from the public, this business is actually closer to Main Street. There's an existing building there it will be going into.
Oh, I was using Las Vegas Boulevard as my reference point. Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, my motion is for approval of items nine through 16, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Schlotman and Truesdale on item 14 and mine on item 15.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items nine through 16 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioners Truesdale and Commissioner Schlotman on item number 14, and Commissioners Moody's abstention on item number 15.
Mr. Chairman, please note that item number 11 will go forward to the March 19 City Council meeting. Items number nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 are all final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you, Director. We're now going to skip ahead to item number 49 at the behest of Commissioner Moody. Item number 49 is VAR 52452. The applicant owner is Robert B. Foster for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a proposed 595-square-foot accessory structure, Class II casita, in front of the primary structure at 6224 Water Leaf Court in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chair, the applicant is requesting to construct an accessory structure, Class II casita, in the front of the primary structure at 6224 Water Leaf Court. The lot is located at the end of a cul-de-sac, making the lot a unique panhandle shape with most of the available yard in the front of the home. Although it sounds like the structure will be directly in front of the primary residence, it's not. It will be located to the north and west of the residence and, for all practical purposes, have the appearance of another home. Due to the unique shape of the lot, the proposed location is the only viable location for an accessory structure on this lot. As the proposed building will aesthetically match the residence and the adjacent residential buildings and is not directly in front of the primary residential structure, staff recommends approval. Please note an additional letter of support has been received since publication.
Okay. Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, 5096 West Post Road. Along with me is the applicant. Will you state your name and address?
My name is Stephanie Foster, and I'm representing for my husband. He is working out of the state.
Your address.
Oh, 6224 Water Leaf Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hearing us. I want to thank the audience. For the record, we would like to submit the homeowner's HOA approval letter. Along with that, we had to obtain our adjacent neighbors' approval, which, again, part of that approval. And with that, we really ask for your approval. We understand staff's conditions and accept them.
Thank you. Does any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Just a comment before I make the motion. We're not going to hear from anyone else. As you can see from what we have on our screen, although technically, the accessory structure is in front of the house, it's not really. It's off to the side based on the fact of the unique position of this house. I appreciate the fact that you've got HOA approval as well as the adjacent neighbors, and so you'll see my support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion is for approval of item 49, VAR 52452, which follows staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, we'll pick it back up on the public hearing items, beginning with items, related items number 17, 18, and 19. Starting with item number 17, which is VAR 50841. The applicant is V&amp;V Tac and Feed. The owner is Mary Bartzus, 13 LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where a 10-foot side yard setback is required, and to allow a 5-foot rear yard setback where a 20-foot setback is required at the northwest corner of Rancho Drive and Michael Way in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 18, which is VAR 50842, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 17 parking spaces where 71 spaces are required in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 19, SDR 50840, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 12,400-square-foot commercial development and 1,880-square-foot outside storage area with a waiver to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer along the north, south, and west interior property lines where an eight-foot-wide landscape buffer is required. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending denial. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this development consists of a steel panel structure that will serve as a feed and tack store, and a open-sided steel panel structure that will serve as an outside storage for hay and bulk materials. This development proposal is accompanied with waivers to request a reduction in landscaping along the north, south, and west interior property lines, and in addition, an exception to deviate from the parking lot landscape requirements is requested. The applicant has also requested a variance to allow reduced setbacks and also reduced parking to allow 15 spaces where 71 spaces are required. Due to the self-imposed hardship from overdeveloping the site and the lack of aesthetic treatment, the site cannot be developed in accordance with the development standards found in Title 19. As such, staff recommends denial of the requested site plan and accompanying waiver and variance requests.
Thank you. And before the applicant speaks, I'm going to go ahead and abstain on this matter. This is item 17, 18, and 19. I have worked with Bartzus's in the past, and there's a very, very somewhat distant relation there. So out of an abundance of caution, I am going to abstain.
All right. Can you go ahead and please state your name and address?
Good evening, Commissioners. Arnold Stock, 2701 Alta Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107, representing the owner and the applicant. The proposed development is V&amp;V Tac and Feed Store. Business is currently located in the vicinity on North Rancho Drive, has been operating in the community for several, for many years. It's a 10,000-square-foot metal panel building, 2,400-square-foot hay storage shed, and one proposed ingress and egress to see on the site plan that's been approved by NDOT. The current zoning is C2 general commercial, therefore, the proposed development should conform with the Unified Development Code, Title 19. The operation hours for the proposed store are Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In terms of the parking, the variance has been asked, staff has been provided a customer count per hour. The average customer per hour in store operations over the week, which is seven days, is about four customers per hour, and we have that documented. A great deal of time and effort has gone into ensuring the proper procedures and protocols have been met with this project. It's been, the item's been put into abeyance twice so that we could work through the issues with staff. There have been several meetings with the City of Las Vegas staff, the surrounding neighbors who have approved this proposed development, many letters of support, which we have and have filed with the, with the Planning Department from the neighbors and current customers of V&amp;V Tac and Feed have been submitted, and there have been several meetings with professional consultants, i.e. architects, engineers, contractors, to work through the site plan and add color and architectural features to the elevations. I just, on a personal one, I might add that we, that I came into this process, we completely redesigned the front facade, which faces Rancho, the two facades. We've added additional landscape to it. It's a very irregular site. It's one of those sites that's, that's hard to market, and we believe that a Tac and Feed, particularly this owner, is a very substantial citizen in the community, is very charitable and very engaged in the community, is one of the few independent Tac and Feed stores that's left. We would, I'm requesting your approval of this, this action, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard on this item, these items?
Yes, we do not have a-
Will you please state your name and address?
Yes. Juanita Clark, representing Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. And we do not have a written thing to hand in today, and we apologize for that. We've just been busy with, with other things, not more important things, of course. We concur with the statements that have just, just, just been made. We have, we have dealt with this business, and where they are located currently is, it is such a challenge to find it that, that, that even though I've been there several times, I need to have, have a rider in order to find it because it's behind trees and it's below elevation of the road where it is. So this, and this, not only that, but it's an expansion, and as he, as he mentioned, to have, to have not a chain in our community is an exciting thing, to have, have the individual touch that business people have, and they are very, they carry fine lines of their product and a variety of the products. And we like the way they do business, and, and also, we concur that they definitely need a place that is more easily located by the public.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. Todd Farla, 240 North 19th Street. I'm for this, and the reason that the parking doesn't concern me is that because most of their customers will probably be coming in with large pickup trucks to pick up hay, and they'll come into the structure itself because the hay will be under, under the roof. So if they don't have more than like 15 employees there at the same time, I think the, the parking will work out fine.
Thank you, Mr. Farla. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion among the Planning Commission. Commissioner Goins?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stock. I'll be supporting the motion just right out front. I just wanted to mention that, I want to compliment Mr. Stock. I met with him and the councilman's liaison out at the property and did a complete walkthrough. I'd just like to thank you for going back and making the recommendations to design the building to make it more aesthetically pleasing instead of the old barn with no landscaping around it. We're really pleased that we're going to extend the sidewalk. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes up and down this sidewalk, and actually, when we were out there, we asked a couple of ladies, were they happy that a sidewalk coming, and they were just ecstatic. So I commend you. Thank you. And if there's not any more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Goins? Just a disclosure, I've worked with Arnie Stock on two charity projects in the past. No money's ever exchanged hands, and it wasn't our charity project in particular, but just wanted to make that disclosure. And while I'm making the disclosure, the zero-foot setback, is that just where the corner of that one building, I can't tell?
That's correct. Yeah.
Hits, and is that neighbor in support of this project?
Yes, yes, Aaron, I have their support.
Okay. And I agree with the Park and Feed Store. Quite a few of them back in Texas, and I've never seen that many people at a, at a feed store, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Truesdale?
So if we're allowed to build this, and the feed store doesn't survive, we're okay with whatever else would come in this building that would be parking impaired? I guess. Mr. Stock, you come here and you always talk great about the charities and all of that stuff, but bottom line, this is a land use issue, and it's a metal shed butler-type building. We don't, staff hasn't supported it in industrial uses, and, but yet, you know, planning commissioners, everybody has an opinion. There's nothing aesthetically pleasing about this, and I spent a lot of time in the Midwest where these are everywhere, but they're, they are everywhere. Here, we don't have an abundance of butler buildings because the county, the city, City of Las Vegas, has really, over the last many years, gotten away from them. There are other feed and tack stores that are in permanent buildings, concrete tilt-up buildings, meet the parking requirements. I won't support this because I, I think it sets a precedent. We, we have argued with many retailers about this type of building, and here, not only we're going to, you want to put this building here that has, there's no, you haven't done anything aesthetic except you painted the middle, metal. We won't, we've, we've argued on this board against every homeowner out there that's wanted to put these up, but now I guess it's okay because, you know, everything's wonderful, but this is the wrong type of building here if we want to develop things. This is, this is looking at the bottom of the barrel, building-wise, and it may be a great business, so I won't support your metal building.
Can I respond to that? Or is this not the time to respond?
Let me take one other comment. Commissioner Goins, did you have another comment?
No.
Yeah, I'll take a brief response, please.
Okay. If you look at the front elevation, which faces Rancho, it is not a blank building. It's got four windows on it. It's got a double entry that was changed. It's got a Purina logo sign on it. It's got an eyebrow over the entry. It's got backlit landscape on it, and it's got four-
Really? You're an architect, and you're trying to tell me this articulation?
Every time I get up here, you don't let me finish.
I'd be glad to let you finish.
Please let me finish what I'm saying.
If you'll both, if you'll both talk to me, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to finish my thoughts, and then I welcome your, your thought, too. Because as a businessman, as a citizen, I like to be on a level playing field, and every time I come up to this commission, I get feedback like, "That's an ugly building," and that's all subjective stuff. This is a Tac and Feed store. There's, there's cowboys coming in here. They like this aesthetic.
There's, there's cowboys coming in here, they like this aesthetic. This isn't Summerlin, it's a, it's an area that's, that's got a lot of rural horses, it's one of the few areas where we have deep lots. People like this, the customers like it. They like this aesthetic, they like their horses, they like hay, you know, hay and feed, and they buy their cowboy boots in here. It's, it's not maybe what other people like, but it's what they, their customers like. They love the building. It's, and because planners have said, you know, "We don't like metal panel buildings," well, maybe they haven't taken a good, hard look at them, because some of the most beautiful buildings in the world are steel buildings. So I'd just like to be on a level playing field when I'm up there.
And I, I agree, you should, you should be able to make your presentation. Your Purina sign exceeds, protrudes above the building line, that's not a sign that we typically do, have approved. An eyebrow or the door for rain shed is not an architecture, it may be a great architectural element, but putting four windows and a door is not architecture, it's just, I've dealt with a lot of people that can draw a square box and put, paint it brown with colors and put four windows on it. If you get 10 architects here, you get 10 different things. We're doing a site development plan review, which lets us make subjective decisions, whether they, you agree with them or not agree with them, whether you agree with me or I don't agree with you. We have not approved this kind of building.
If you look in the arts district, and there's buildings that have no facade, just, just metal on the front of them, those are called art, because they have some red paint on it and a stripe, and somebody sanctioned it as art.
I'm not here to, I'm not here to-
I'm just saying, it's trendy in the arts district, but it's not, it's not trendy when it comes to cowboys and horses.
You want to build this in the arts district?
I'm representing the client on this site right now.
Can I say something, please?
Okay. I, I've given you an opportunity to, to respond, so we're just going to keep this amongst the planning commission for now.
I'd just like to make a brief comment about this item, because I've, I've, I've been in this store multiple times as a horse owner, and my daughter grew up with horses and whatever, but the issue for me is that there's not one single neighbor here that's telling me they don't want to look at your building. And the issue for me is that this is needed, because I think there's two left in the entire city, and pretty soon, if we don't allow this to go through, there will be one, and then people will go to Prump and to other outlying areas, Mesquite, to buy hay, and it'll, again, put people out of work, and this will sit there empty. So, Mr. Stock, you will see my full support on this item this evening. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't memorize the staff backup, but there was a legitimate question brought up by Commissioner Truesdale. If this use goes under, how do we, since this isn't a special use permit, how do we make sure there's adequate parking and circulation for a subsequent use?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The variance would go with the land for parking and with the structure as designed. If the use changed, if a retail establishment were to come in in the future, then it would enjoy the parking variance that was, that may be granted here. The site would then only require the number of spaces as requested of 17 spaces.
Mr. Chairman, I think everybody's had their fair share, so I'll make this real quick. Move for approval of Item 17, VAR 50841, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion for approval carries, noting the abstention of Chairman Phlingis, Item 18.
Item 18, abeyance VAR 50842, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Please post. A motion also carries, again noting the abstention of Chairman Phlingis, and Item 19.
Item 19, abeyance SDR 50840, move for approval, subject to all standard conditions and recommendations.
And please post. Motion for approval of Item 19 also carries, again noting the abstention of Chairman Phlingis.
Mr. Vice Chair, please note that these items will go forward to the March 19th City Council meeting.
Thank you, Director. We're now going to move on to items, related items 20, 21, 22, and 23, beginning with Item Number 20, which is GPA 52116. The applicant is Richmond American Homes, the owner is G Springs LLC. For possible action on request for a general plan amendment from RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to ML Medium Low Density Residential at the southwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Grand Canyon Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross, staff is recommending denial. Related Item Number 21, ZON 52117, for possible action on a request for rezoning from U, undeveloped, RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation, general plan designation, to RCL Single Family Compact Lot at the southwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Grand Canyon Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item Number 22, WVR 52169, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow an intersection to be offset 164 feet, where the minimum offset allowed is 220 feet, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Related Item 23, TMP 52119, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed 63-lot, single-family residential subdivision in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chair, the applicant is proposing a 58-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 10.1 acres at the southwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Grand Canyon Drive. There are four land use applications associated with this project. The general plan amendment will amend the southwest sector plan from RPN Rural Preservation, Rural Neighborhood Preservation and Public Facilities to ML Medium Low Density Residential Land Use Designation. The accompanied zoning application will change the zoning from U, undeveloped, RNP Rural Preservation, Rural Neighborhood Preservation, general plan designation, to RCL Single Family Compact Lot. The accompanied waivers will allow reduction in the distance between street intersections from 222, or 220 feet to 164 feet, and the tentative map is for 58 lots, for 58 single-family lots. The applicant held two neighborhood meetings, where the citizens raised concerns about the minimum lot size, the required street distance offset waiver, and the, and the direct vehicle access to Deer Springs Way. After the initial neighborhood meeting, the applicant reduced the number of residential lots from 63 to 53, reduced the off, the street offset waiver from 169 feet to 164 feet, and increased the lot size, sizes on the northeast and southeast portions of the property. However, after considering the revisions proposed, proposed by the applicant, this project is still too dense. As proposed, the project cannot be constructed in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding community, therefore, staff recommends denial of all four land use applications.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Richmond American Homes. First, if I can just direct your attention to the overhead, you can see our property is highlighted in yellow, it's the 10.18 acres, or 10.18 acres, located on the southwest corner of Deer Springs and Grand Canyon. Just for a little background information, the parcel right here, just to basically the west and south, is the BLM, which has a future intent use, what we understand, for the water district. And then directly to the north, on the other side of Deer Springs, is another Richmond-approved project actually located in the county. With that background information, we went ahead and initially proposed a 63-lot subdivision, and held a neighborhood meeting on December 16th. You can see right here is the, the first site plan that we proposed and submitted to staff. At that neighborhood meeting, there was a few residents that, that were in attendance. The residents primarily resided in the homes just to the north and just to the south of the subject site. At that neighborhood meeting, the neighbors expressed the desire to have larger lots, essentially buffer their lots. So in response to their concern that they told us, we decided to obey this item and hold a second neighborhood meeting, so that we could show some of the changes that we made. Those changes that we made were presented to them this past Thursday night, and we showed them this plan right here, which reduced the density from 63 lots to 58. Some of the changes that we heard and that we made for them was that, let me first show you, so you'd be easier to compare and contrast, is on the north here, adjacent to our northern neighbors here. What we did was make these lots larger, they're all about 7,100 square feet or slightly larger, and instead of having six lots face their four, their three, we ended up reducing it to four lots facing their three. Also, as I mentioned, it was the subdivision just to the south that also expressed some current concern about the lot size, so what we did was, we reduced the lot, we increased lot sizes on the south property to where there's now three facing those two homes. We presented that to the neighbors on Thursday night. In attendance at that neighborhood meeting were several more neighbors than just the two, or the, the two representative neighborhood groups from our previous meeting. Based on comments that we received, it was, it was difficult to ascertain what exactly the density that was desired in this neighborhood. We have done a mock-up plan, slightly reducing the density a little bit more, we've reduced it to 56 homes, and what we've done was, once again, it was trying to take into consideration the primary neighbors that are most affected by this, their concerns, once again, about lot sizes on the north and south. And so what we did was, on our north, we went from the four lots here facing their three to matching three, three, and three, and that, or one, two, and three to their one, two, and three, and with that, lot size is about 10,000 square feet. We additionally made some changes on the south portion, which increased those lots, and in the process, we went from 58 lots down to 56 lots. Of course, Richmond American owns this property right here, and this property is zoned RD in the county, which is about three and a half units to the acre. Per this approval, the minimum lot size on that is about 11,600 square feet. There is one key distinction, though, that I think is important to note, that in the county, when private roads, they can actually measure to the center line, so it's 11,600 feet of, of basically gross space versus the net usable. When you back out what the middle street or the half-street that's included in that lot size, you actually get to a lot that's a little less than 10,000. So it corresponds a little bit more to what we've done along Deer Springs. Also, we think Deer Springs is a fairly good demarcation line, as far as density and transitioning from a slightly more dense to slightly less dense as you get closer to the RNP neighborhoods to the north and west of this site, because Deer Springs will be about an 80-foot right-of-way or greater when it's fully built out. But at the end of the day, we are here to take some suggestions from the planning commission, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farla, 240 North 19th Street. My question in all of these things coming up is, what about the parking? And this is the reason for it. Councilwoman Tartanian had a, had a meeting with the group, and it was brought up in that meeting, that the Supreme Court has ruled that our R1 zoning basically is out the window, because people are allowed to rent rooms in their home, up to three or four, I guess. And if that is the case, and if people here decide that they're going to rent a room in their home, say, say they're going to rent, they're going to live in two bedrooms, and they're going to rent out two, those people, since there's no buses or anything out there, they're going to be driving, all right? Where are they going to put their cars? Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. What, what happens when the rest of the property to the west of, okay, so on the north side of Deer Springs, west side of the three RNP lots, what happens when that gets built out in RNP? Or is that where you said that D.R. Horton already had another site planned?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you're alluding to this 35 acres on the north side of, of Deer Springs-
Okay, go ahead.
If you're talking about this 35 acres in here on the north side of Deer Springs, this is actually an approved site for, for Richmond, the client I'm representing tonight, and this was just approved about 10 months ago in the county for, I believe it's a 91-lot subdivision through here.
Chairman, another question, or just a comment, and then I'll let everybody else take over, but it, it just seems like a goofy tentative map. When you come in, you have three very large lots, or four, whichever tentative map you're submitting, and then you go to these microlots across the street and right past it, and then we try putting in three additional larger lots on the southeast corner of this, this site. So it's the intentions to have these large houses, large lots, mixed in, where it just goes to the smaller lots. If it was a mixture throughout the community, I, I think it would be a little bit more cohesive, but this, I've never seen anything built like this, and I don't understand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Okay, thanks. First of all, thank you, Mr. Celeste, and the applicant. There's been a lot of hard work going on, trying to make this work. I know that only five neighbors showed up at your initial meeting, but last week, 16 neighbors showed up, and I was there, and you're absolutely right, there was not a consensus about what they were actually asking for, and that question was asked a number of times, but there, the one consensus was, there's too much density here, we want some bigger lot sizes. I, I have to agree with the city on this, that we're still too dense for this rural setting. The applicant has at least two products right here in the, the close vicinity, that has square footage that's more than double the, the smaller lot size that's here. So I appreciate your, your request for a suggestion, whether we call it a suggestion or a wish list, I'm happy to make that, and what I'm going to recommend is that we hold this for 30 days, to see if the applicant is perhaps willing to go back to the owner and say, you know, "These are some of the things that, that have been recommended, what, what can we do here?" And so, so let me start, and we have what I want up on the screen. I, I think we've got a pretty good resolution on the northeast side of the property with the, the homeowners across Deer Springs. Based on what's coming in, and has already been approved by the county on the northwest side, I think we've got to continue this lot size all the way to the west, on that, that north end. You're right, that the, the water district owns the, you know, the surrounding property, including on the, the southwest side. So I, I guess my, my second recommendation would be that we, we look at all the other properties, other than those on the, the north side, all the way across, and on the southeast side at R1, and that way, we have a minimum lot- And that way, we have a minimum lot size of sixty-five thousand square feet. And then, the only other thing on my wish list would be that there be appropriate buffering around the rural estates, the RE estates. And you'd have my support, if we could come up with something like that, close to that, and I think the neighbors should be happy with that type of middle ground. So I don't know if you have the authority to agree to hold this for thirty days and to approach the owner, but that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Commissioner Moody, do you want to make a motion?
Mr. Celeste, do I have your agreement to hold, or do you want to vote?
No, thank you, Commissioner. I would, I do have authority to hold this for thirty days. I'll get with Richmond, and we'll work to try to meet some of these wish list criteria, hold another neighborhood meeting, and come back with a plan. Hopefully, that can see support of this commission.
Very good, and I would appreciate an invitation to that so I can attend. Mr. Chair, my motion is to obey this, or hold this item for, well, until our next planning commission meeting, which I believe is March eleventh, twenty fourteen.
And that's items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
That is correct.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. The motion to obey this matter to the March eleventh, twenty fourteen Planning Commission Meeting carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now go on to related items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, beginning with item number twenty-four. GPA five-two-one-two, applicant is Richmond American Homes. The owner is Verlane LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to L Low Density Residential at the northwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Bradley Road in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number twenty-five is ZON five-two-one-two-three. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number twenty-six is WVR five-two-one-seven-one. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow an intersection to be offset one-hundred-and-fifty feet where the minimum offset allowed is two-hundred-and-twenty feet in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Item number twenty-seven, VAC five-two-one-two-five. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a ten-foot-wide roadway easement on the west side of Bradley Road as well as all of Honey Creek Avenue in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Last related item, twenty-eight, which is TMP five-two-one-two-seven. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed forty-lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has submitted a project for a forty-lot, single-family residential subdivision on nine-point-one-eight acres on the northwest corner of Iron Mountain and Bradley Roads. There are five applications associated with this project. The GPA would change the land use from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to L Low Density Residential, and the zoning would go from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential. Both of these respective changes are appropriate and compatible with the adjacent land uses, and staff recommends approval. A vacation waiver tentative map was also submitted with this request, and when originally submitted, staff was recommending denial due to the vacation of Honey Creek Avenue on the north, which is reflected in the staff report. However, since that time, the applicant has revised their plans, removing that portion of the vacation pertaining to Honey Creek Avenue, and as a result, staff is now recommending approval of the vacation. The waiver is needed to allow an intersection to be offset one-hundred-and-fifty feet where the minimum offset is two-hundred-and-twenty feet. Staff supports this request, as minimal traffic is anticipated at these intersections. The tentative map now reflects the full right-of-way of Honey Creek Avenue and an open access plan that allows for multiple ingress and egress points to the development. Staff recommended denial based on the original denial of the related vacation. However, now that that vacation has been modified, staff now recommends approval of all applications. Please note that condition changes have been made to the vacation and tentative map applications and are reflected in the blue sheets and the backup documentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If we could hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, excuse me, I forgot. Commissioner Goines, I think you are going to abstain?
Yeah, before, I just looked at the notice map, and the line is going right through my property, so I'll be abstaining on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three, forty-five West Sunset Road, here tonight representing Richmond American Homes. We appreciate staff working with us on our revised plans. As staff indicated, with the revised plans, they can now support all of our applications. I'd be happy to go into more detail, but we do agree with the revised conditions, that they have provided a copy to us, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? If y'all could state your name and address, please?
Jason Ruff, seventy-three-ten Smoke Ranch Road. I'm with Dwyer Engineering, representing my client. We're just looking at item number twenty...
Excuse me, could you identify your client with name and address?
Hello, Sia Farakthila. My mom is the owner of the property north of the vacation.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ruff.
We're just concerned with item number twenty-seven. You're recommending denial with the revised tentative map and stuff, this is no longer an issue, is it correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, just to be clear, we are putting in that street. We are not vacating Honey Creek Avenue.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
I'm prepared to make a motion if there are no other comments or questions. Item twenty-four, GPA five-two-one-two-two, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number twenty-four carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
Item twenty-five, ZON five-two-one-two-three, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number twenty-five carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
Item twenty-six, WVR five-two-one-seven-one, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number twenty-six carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
Item twenty-seven, VAC five-two-one-two-five, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please post. Motion to approve item number twenty-seven carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
And finally, item twenty-eight, TMP five-two-one-two-seven, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please post. Motion to approve item number twenty-eight carries, again noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
Mr. Chairman, these items go forward to the March nineteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Moving on now to related items twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, beginning with item number twenty-nine, which is GPA five-two-one-three-three. The applicant is Richmond American Homes. The owner is Precedent Properties LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to L Low Density Residential at the northwest corner of Sheila Hida Avenue and Bradley Road in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number thirty, ZON five-two-one-three-four. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number thirty-one is TMP five-two-one-three-five. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed ten-lot, single-family residential subdivision in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has submitted a project for a ten-lot, single-family residential development on four-point-one-six acres located on the northwest corner of Sheila Hida Avenue and Bradley Road. There are three applications with this project. The GPA would change the land use from Public Facilities to Rural Density Residential, and the zoning would change from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential. Both of these respective changes are appropriate and compatible with the adjacent land uses, and staff recommends approval. The related tentative map reflects two short cul-de-sac streets to serve the ten lots with one access off Sheila Hida Avenue. As the project meets all code requirements, including the one-point-three connectivity ratio, staff recommends approval on all three applications.
Thank you. Hear from the applicant again?
Hello again, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three, forty-five West Sunset Road, representing Richmond American. Again, keeping it short, we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty-nine, two forty, North Nineteenth Street. And perhaps Dr. Derby could like to weigh in on this, too, because this low-density, low-density residential, single-family residential, doesn't mean a thing. Doesn't mean a thing anymore with the Supreme Court ruling. So I don't know how you're going to make a decision out here if you're going to have all these families living in this, if it's a possibility.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is David Varelli, address nine-zero-one-two Sawhill Pond, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-three-one. Looking at the map, I presume you guys can see the map as well. We are in, we've lived up there in the northwest for about a year now. I don't have any concrete evidence or concrete proof, but my neighbors and I, and our realtor told us that that, this property we're talking about was destined to be a park, and we are in need of a park up there in the northwest. The days of being able to walk into a high school over the weekend and play flag football are over. We can't do that anymore. I don't know if any of you have actually gone out and seen this property, but it is an absolutely beautiful property to have such a park. There's a lot of hiking, there's a lot of biking around there. As you guys know, the shooting park is just up north, there is a proposed equestrian park just to the west of it, and I can't think of an area up there in the northwest that would be more beautiful for a park. Four acres to me, approximately four acres to me, just seems like a small place to just throw up ten houses. I think the property would be much better served as a park, and unfortunately, I don't have a lot of neighbors here supporting me. A lot of them are in the military, a lot of them work in the car business, which they work later than us, and I would certainly just like to be heard on that, and I invite you guys to come out and look at it yourself.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you. You know, you can tell by the unique piece of property we have here that it's a little challenging, and I actually commend the applicant. I think they've done a great job with the design of, you know, of what you have there, and so you're going to see my support on these.
Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Sloman?
Chairman, through you. Just to address the last person who came up, it's, we would all love to see more parks, and I'm with you a hundred percent, but it's really hard to tell applicants to build a park on their own personal property, so as much as I do see what you're saying, it's just not a possibility.
Thank you, Commissioner. I echo those comments as well. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My motion on item twenty-nine, GPA five-two-one-three-three, is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please post. Motion to approve item number twenty-nine carries.
Item thirty, ZON five-two-one-three-four, motion is also to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Please post. Motion to approve item number thirty carries.
And finally, item thirty-one, TMP five-two-one-three-five, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please post. Motion to approve item number thirty-one carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to the March nineteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Moving on now to item number thirty-two, which is SUP five-two-one-zero-one. The applicant owner is Eastern Nine-Five LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four square-foot convenience store with a waiver to allow a two-four, a two-four-two, excuse me, two-hundred-and-forty-two-foot distance separation from a church house of worship where four-hundred feet is required at four-hundred Northeastern Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chair, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory package liquor use within an existing four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four square-foot general retail store other than listed, convenience store located at four-hundred Northeastern. Currently, the site is entitled to sell beer and wine, and is now requesting to sell liquor. The distance waiver accompanies this application to allow the sale of liquor within two-hundred-and-forty-two feet of a house of worship where four-hundred feet is required. The required distance separation waiver reinforces the unsuitability of the proposed use at this location. Staff recommends denial of this special use permit.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Lucy Stewart, twenty-five-hundred West Sahara, representing the property owner and applicant. And the current owner did purchase this property back in October of last year, and since then, he's been making many changes, such as cleaning up the property. He's now installed, you can purchase your gas or your products with a credit card, and he's gotten his beer and license approved. And what he'd like to do is add liquor, you know, packaged liquor for sale, but it's, the way he tends to do it is have a very small amount. He'd have the liquor stored, like under the counter, and the display would just be one bottle of each type of liquor that he's selling, and it'd be behind the counter, so you can't just, it can't be a snatch and grab. You actually have to come to the counter, and you'll be, you know, you'll have to show your identification, and then, you know, as he sells that, he'll just replace it with one more. So he really, even though it says twenty square feet, it's really going to be significantly smaller amount than that. It really is just a display, and it's just an added service to the community. Even though it is close within the four-hundred-foot property line to property line for the place of, house of worship, it is separated by Eastern, which is an amazingly busy street at that location, because it does pull a lot of traffic north... at that location, because it does pull a lot of traffic north of there and northeast of there to get on to the US 95. Also, one of the reasons that it is within that distance is because this is actually, you know, your standard convenience store is about 3/4 of an acre up to an acre, and this is over four acres. So it doesn't have the, the property line closer, you know, more in, closer to the, to the pumps than you would normally find. And then lastly, you know, because of a concern of staff recommending denial, we did go out into the neighborhood and got many signatures from not only just neighbors, but also from our clients, our customers that come into there. And I think there's over 161 signatures that have been turned in to the city, and then also we have like over seven businesses, and the immediate ones adjacent have signed an approval of this. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. That house of worship is that old home site Baptist Church. It's gone now, but there's some other people there. The big problem, that, that house of worship is not the problem. The problem is the Housing Authority land to the east of that. I am down there all the time bitching and moaning about those trees not getting watered. They're not getting watered because the homeless are out there tearing up the, the valves on the thing, stealing the valves and selling them for scrap metal to buy the booze. Right now, we need to just put this on ice for a while, maybe at some later date, maybe a, a hard liquor thing would be all right. But right now, let's find out what the Housing Authority is going to do with that land, because right now they don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Yes, Chairman. Through you. And Mr. Farlow, I appreciate your comments, and I'm not sure where that Housing Authority property is, but I've been through this convenience station about five times, and one of the things different about this particular application for me was that I've never once seen graffiti on this building. They've done a very good job of keeping this property cleaned up. And I think it's the first applicant within a year that's brought us something that met the 20% window signage, which is nice to see. So not having all the signs spam and everything else, we spoke about one or two signs. Lucy's going to work on that. And so for those reasons, I would support it. Also, it is 100-foot right-of-way, and it's directly on the highway in Eastern. So I really don't have that big of a concern with this particular space.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, for the reasons stated. Item number 32, SUP 52101, I would make a motion for approval following staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number 32 carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be going forward to the March 19 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Going to do now Related Items 33, 34, 35, and 36, beginning with item number 33, which is ZON 51413 rezoning. The applicant is J.P. Morgan Chase. Owner is Vals Family Trust. For possible action on a request for rezoning from CD Design Commercial to O Office at 2301 and 2319 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 34, VAR 51414, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 23-foot front yard setback where 25 feet is required, and a 10-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 35, SUP 51415, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed drive-through with no intervening building between the drive-through and the residentially-zoned property, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Final related item, 36, SDR 51412, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 24-foot tall, 3,475-square-foot financial institution, general, and drive-through with a waiver to allow a 5-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the north property line where 10 feet is required, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I represent the landowner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the request, requested zoning of the site is appropriate. The change to an O Office zoning district from the general plan would not affect the previous CD commercial, designed commercial standards that apply to properties along this segment of Charleston Boulevard. And this project does meet those requirements of that overlay. Although the site plan shows a slight deviation from the required front and corner yard setbacks, this requested variance is warranted due to the shallowness of the lots making up the site. In addition, the encroaching portions of the east side of the building do not contain floor space. The proposed site development plan generally conforms to Title 19 requirements. Attention has been given to ensure the proposed drive-through is adequately screened for residential uses and does not create unwanted nuisances. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of all requested applications. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening. If we could hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Chris Kemfer here on behalf of J.P. Morgan Chase. As noted by staff, there are four aspects to our application. The first is the zone change to office to allow for the bank. Second are two variances to allow for front yard setback of 23 feet where 25 is required, and for 10-foot corner side yard setback where 15 is required. The special use permit for a proposed drive-through, and finally, the site development review. We very much appreciate staff's working with us, and respect and appreciate the recommendations of approval. We accept all of staff conditions, and we would respectfully ask for your approval, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. Like to open this up for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
This is a really exciting project coming into Ward 1, Mr. Kemfer. And if my fellow planning commissioners have no discussion on it, the one thing I want to make known to everyone is the, the hard work you did with the landscape. I know the first one is the, the zone change, but the fact that on the east side, I sat there today in the parking lot and yesterday, and when people get off that bus, they just tromp all right through that east where there should be beautiful landscape. It would be just wasting your money and time to put it there. So I respect the fact that you placed it in other places beautifully, and it's going to do nothing but make that corner lively and appropriate and clean and secure. So if nobody else has anything to say, I'm excited to make the motion for approval of all four items, unless if anyone else needs to be heard.
Please do. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Regarding item number 33, which is the zone change, number 51413, I accept staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Go ahead and please post. The motion to approve carries noting the absten, excuse me, the motion to approve item number 33 carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you, Director, I mean Commissioner Flankis. Regarding number 34, which is variance 51414, respecting staff's recommendation for approval, I also wish for this to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number 34 carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you. Regarding the special use permit for the drive-through, 51415, following staff's recommendation for approval.
And that'll be item 35?
Yes.
The motion to approve item 35 carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you. And item number 36 is the site development plan review, SDR 51412, noting that the east side of that property cannot have landscape. I follow staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number 36 carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, these items go forward to the March 19 City Council meeting.
Thank you, Director.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you very much. Especially Commissioner Quinn, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Good night. Going on now to Related Items 37, 38, 39, and 40, beginning with item number 37, which is ZON 52112. The applicant owner is 126 11th Street LLC. For possible action on a request for rezoning from R4 High Density Residential to C2 General Commercial at 116 and 126 South 11th Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 38, SUP 52114, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed mixed-use residential development with a waiver to allow no ground-floor retail where such use is required in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 39, VAC 52115, for possible action on a, on a petition to vacate a 20-foot wide public alley generally located west of 11th Street between Fremont Street and Carson Avenue in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Last related item number 40, TMP 52113, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Yes, Chairman, before we start, I'm going to abstain on these, on these related items, seeing as I have ongoing business relationship with the property owner of these items. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to rezone three of the parcels contained within this request to, from R4 to C2. This would then bring all of the parcels within this block area to C2. The additional request for the special use permit for the mixed-use project would allow those apartment complexes, those multifamily, to remain intact as they are and be in conformance with the zoning, which is C2. Multifamily is only permitted in C2 as part of a mixed-use project. Since the apartments exist currently, there is no retail on the bottom of these items at this time, and therefore, they need a waiver of that requirement. The vacation would vacate the valley, the alleyway along there, and then the commercial tentative map would then combine all of these parcels into one single parcel. Staff does recommend approval of all the applications. Please note, we did receive additional electronic comments in support of this project.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Scott Rudy, 7115 Amigo Street, Suite 100, here on behalf of the applicant. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation of approval, and we agree to all of the conditions placed on the applications, and we would request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner?
Seeing, does anyone wish to speak on this? Because I think this is a good project, and staff's taken a great look at it. So I'm ready to make the motion for approvals.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Regarding number 37, the zone change, number 52112, following staff's recommendation tonight for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
One second, before we vote, Mr. Chairman. I'm currently leasing a building downtown, and I'm not sure if this project is related to downtown project, and I'm not, not sure if they may not be involved in the financing of that tenant. So I, in a sense of being cautious, I will abstain on this item.
Please post. Motion to approve item number 37 carries noting the abstentions of Commissioners Truesdale and Sloman.
Thank you. Regarding item number 38, the SUP 52114, the special use permit, following staff's recommendations as well for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. The motion to approve item number 38 carries noting the abstentions of Commissioners Truesdale and Sloman.
Thank you. Regarding vacation item number 39, 52115, also following staff's recommendation this evening for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. The motion to approve item number 39 carries, again noting the abstentions of Commissioners Truesdale and Sloman.
Thank you. On to number 40, which is a temporary map of TMP 52113, also following staff's recommendation this evening for approval.
Thank you. Please vote.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to approve item number 40 carries noting the abstentions, again, of Commissioners Truesdale and Sloman.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to the March 19 City Council meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good night. Moving on now to Related Items 44 and 45, beginning with item number 44, which is VAR 52463. The applicant owner is JWB Investment Series B LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow four parking spaces where a minimum of seven spaces are required at 344 South Jones Boulevard in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 45, SDR 52464, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the conversion of a single-family residence to a 1,853-square-foot office building with waivers to allow a 5-foot landscape buffer along the west property line where 15 feet is required, a 3-foot landscape buffer along the north property line where 5 feet is required, and a 0-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the south property line where 5 feet is required in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is another office conversion along South Jones Boulevard, and is following the land use trend of converting residential property to professional office and parking along this stretch of roadway south of US 95. The property will maintain its appearance as a residence, but will operate as an office use. As a result, a variance to allow four parking spaces where seven is required, waivers of portions of the perimeter landscaping, an exception to allow one fewer trees than code requires are needed. Due to the unique challenges found on these properties and the development pattern that has emerged along this section of Jones Boulevard, staff supports these applications and recommends approval. Please note, additional comments from the public have been received since publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, I'm Pat Sampson from Ace Engineering, and we've been working on the civil plan design for this project. And it had been previously approved, and there were some difficulties in getting some things through, and so the entitlements expired, but the owner does want to proceed and get this project finished. The office itself is not an office with a large staff. It typically would have the owner, maybe one or two staff people in there. So the parking requirement shortage is not really going to be an issue because there aren't a lot of people that come into that particular building. And the landscaping, of course, you know, we are challenged, but they do have some plans for some very pretty landscaping on the property, and they will enhance the appearance of the house as it sits right now to make it very nice into the community there.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Tot Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I think this is going to be a disaster, but that entire Jones Street is a disaster.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Ms. Sampson, we spoke on the phone, correct?
Yes.
I called you. Thank you for, we had a nice discussion. And I just want to confirm with you that this is going to be an office for a language school, not a school itself, correct?
It's not a school, it's the office.
Right. There will be no tutoring onsite or anything, no kids coming in and out. It's simply the working office for the JW Language School.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. And I want to thank you for adding that nice handicap parking in the back there, because I do appreciate that very much, as you know. So with that said, if nobody else has anything to say, this is going to enhance Jones Boulevard. The landscape design that you submitted is about the best you can do for that area, and it's only going to improve the site itself. So if nobody else has anything to say, I'm ready to follow staff's recommendation and improve your project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Thank you. Variance five-two-four-six-three, following staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please vote.
Thank you.
Please post. Motion to approve item number forty-four carries.
Thank you. And also, Ms. Sampson, number forty-five is the SDR four-two-four-six-four, will follow staff's recommendation for approval, and I look forward to that nice landscaping going in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item number forty-five carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you, Mr. Director. We're now moving on to item number forty-six, which is VAR five-two-three-seven-seven. The applicant owner is Mark C. and Jennifer N. Tingey. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a twenty-one-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is the minimum required for a proposed expansion of a single-family dwelling at four-one-zero-eight Everest Street in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chair, the applicant is requesting a twenty-one-foot front yard setback variance where twenty-five feet is the minimum required. The variance will allow a one-hundred-and-eighty-eight square-foot expansion of the principal dwelling. The site is located at forty-one-zero-eight Everest Street in the RPD Two Resident Land Development, two units per acre zoning district. The proposed expansion is to create additional storage for bulk food and household items. Substantial evidence has not been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed. Staff recommends denial of this request.
Thank you. And may we hear from the applicant? If you could state your name and address, please?
It's Jennifer Tingey, forty-one-zero-eight Everest Street, eight-nine-one-two-nine. What we desire is to use a little bit of that setback space so that I can create kind of a mudroom storage area in my garage before you enter into the home. I've got four kids. They all have tennis and sports and piano and school, and their stuff is kind of taking over my kitchen. This, I've kind of consulted with several different professionals on this. This is the cheapest way to go, and also the most effective for us, because they will be able to access that mudroom before they walk into the house. You know, I know staff has pointed out to me that we have plenty of space on the east side, on the south side of the property, where we could add on all we wanted, but unfortunately, that wouldn't service any of the needs that we are considering this expansion for. I did talk to neighbors. We had seventy neighbors within that a thousand-foot circle that are inside of my neighborhood. I made a goal to talk to each one. I didn't meet the goal. I talked to about forty-five to fifty in person. And then I went ahead and sent out a letter to the remainder of the hundred-and-eight that were inside the a thousand-foot, a thousand-feet radius for my property. I wanted everyone to have the chance to talk to me. I put my phone number there. I showed pictures before and after, and kind of explained what I'm looking to do with the property. If this change went through, well, first, let me just say the neighbor response was overwhelmingly positive. I think we have about sixty submissions of support from neighbors on this issue. And one concern was about the, if cars could still park in the driveway. If half of that driveway was then only made a twenty-one-foot drive, if cars could still park there without encroaching on the right-of-way. And we do, I took, excuse me, I'm so nervous. I took pictures of, I have an oversized car. I have a three-row SUV. It was able to fit with several feet of room. I have pictures if you'd like to see. I took a picture of my husband has a truck with the, you know, the two, the large cab that can seat six people and the extended, like, cabin with a tow hitch on, and that was able to fit in the twenty-one-foot. So I feel like this change, if it is supported, it won't encroach on any right-of-way issues on the road. It won't go out to the street. We would definitely accept all the conditions of the city. We've actually, there was a shed that was in the improper place on our lot, so we've already taken care of that and had that inspected by the code enforcement officer. And I think that's everything that I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Good evening, ma'am. If you could state your name and address, please?
My name is Elizabeth Briggs. I'm at forty-one-zero-eight Everest Street. Our house is adjacent to the Tingey's home, and we would really support this. We feel like the change to the facade of her home, which is very plain now, so it will have a lot more detailing on it. The little roof expansion and the shutters and stuff would reflect nicely on the rest of our homes in that area. So we're all for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. I'll go first, if that's okay on this one. The, I think that the project looks nice. I think it's minimally invasive. I think it's a good way to do it, and it flows nicely, and I'm particularly convinced with all your neighbors supporting this, so you'll have my support for this tonight. Commissioner Quinn, did you have a comment?
No, I'm happy.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair. First of all, nice work, Mrs. Tingey. You've certainly done your legwork on this, and you do have overwhelming support. The motion regarding item forty-six, VAR five-two-three-seven-seven, is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. The motion to approve item number forty-six carries.
Mr. Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Good night. Moving on to item number forty-seven, which is VAR five-two-four-five-zero. The applicant owner is Nemo Strang. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a four-foot, six-inch yard, excuse me, six-inch side yard setback where five feet is required to enclose an existing carport at one-zero-two-three Norman Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request by the applicant to enclose an existing carport that does not meet the minimum five-foot side yard setback. A variance of six inches is required to allow the carport to be enclosed to create a bedroom for the owner's growing family. This home with the carport was built in the nineteen forties, and has always had the existing four-foot, six-inch side yard setback. However, since the applicant is voluntarily requesting to enclose the carport, a variance of this existing condition is required. Staff recommends denial. Please note, additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication.
Thank you. Could we hear from the applicant, please? And sir, if you'll state your name and address?
My name's Nemo Strang. I live at ten-twenty-three Norman Avenue, eight-nine-one-zero-four. I have, I've lived there for over twenty years. I'm a forty-five-year veteran of Las Vegas. I really love my house. Everybody sold their homes in my neighborhood and went and bought bigger homes and everything, but I decided to stay because I really do love living in the Hunt Ridge neighborhood. I have a problem. My house is like six-hundred-and, eight-hundred-and-sixty square foot, and I have two kids now, and I kind of need the space. I don't want to leave my neighborhood, but if I don't get that six-inch variance, I might have to move. So, I mean, I don't know what else to say, but I hope everybody understands. I'm just trying to better my family here.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you, Tot Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I'm in the same position with the applicant. Our homes were built in about the same time, and there's, I hate to tell you this, but putting on the tot carport is a waste of money. These homes cannot be saved. They need to be pulled.
Thank you. Do any other members wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Bonner?
Just a question for staff. If it doesn't meet the five-foot, is there an additional fire retardation needed when he encloses that space?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. There'll be a requirement to have a one-hour fire rating, and no penetration of that sidewall will be permitted at five feet to meet the fire code and building code along that. Generally, though, if you enclose it, it's going to meet the one-hour definition if it's stucco.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes. I am on item number forty-seven on our agenda right now, but my screen's pulling up the last item, so I can't necessarily look at the photos, so I'll go off of memory. Thank you. I looked at this, and I'm typically the first person to say that I don't like carports and I don't like enclosing them. However, this carport was integrated into the roof of the main structure. It looks nice. It's not sticking out into the front yard, past the front part of your house, and I would support this. My only question is, once you build that addition, are you going to pull the fence back so the front of your house is shown?
The fence will actually be taken down, and a gate will be put on the side. I won't need the fence anymore. The carport hasn't been used in fifteen years for a carport.
Okay. Thank you. And also, reading staff's report, they also mentioned that this is a soft denial in the mildest way possible. So I feel comfortable in supporting this and allowing you to go ahead and close this in and move forward.
I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner.
Yes, on item number forty-seven, VAR five-two-four-five-zero, for the reasons stated, I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item number forty-seven carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Going on now to item number forty-eight, which is VAR five-two-four-five-one. The applicant is William and Kelly Oakley. The owner is Shady Lady Trust. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback where ten feet is the minimum required for a proposed expansion of a single-family dwelling at three-two-zero-one Skipworth Drive in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chair, the applicant is, this request is for a variance to allow five-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required for a proposed eight-hundred-and-thirty-four square-foot expansion of the principal dwelling. The proposed expansion will provide additional storage for household items and a secure place to park the owner's vehicle. The site is located at thirty-two-zero-one Skipworth Drive in the RE Residence Estate zoning district and the rural preservation overlay. The requested setback is not consistent with the characteristics of single-family homes on large lots in the rural preservation overlay, and no substantial evidence has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed. Staff is recommending denial of this request.
Thank you. And may we hear from the applicant, please? If you could state your names and addresses, please?
Hi, I'm Kelly Oakley. I'm the owner at thirty-two-zero-one Skipworth Drive, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-zero-seven.
And sir?
David Heinz, residential designer, seventy-four-thirty-five West Camaro Avenue.
Thank you.
Our current home has no garage, and so we're requesting that we can add on a garage. I specifically have hired David Heinz because he's done a house in the neighborhood that actually received the side setback, side setback variance. Turned out beautiful. It's probably one of the most beautiful homes in our neighborhood. We're wanting a garage to keep our vehicles and bikes and household items stored inside of rather than in the side part of our property where our neighbors can see. And the way that it's been designed, it will add beautification to the neighborhood. We have to replace the siding on the entire house to match paint, and then we'll be changing the sidewalk, the cement of the front driveway, and also adding landscape.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Start with Commissioner Quinn.
Yes. Hi, Mrs. Oakley.
Hi.
Finally, we meet. I did visit your house and your dogs and sat in your yard, and I had a nice phone call today from Mr. Baldes around the corner on MacArthur, who completely loves your project and says that you've done nothing but improved your home as time's gone over the last ten years, that you've beautified the neighborhood just by living in it and by everything you've done thus far. And I think what people don't understand about that old neighborhood is that people have done this time and time again, and the reason why it's not noticed or people aren't called upon as it being not right for the neighborhood is because it's always well-done. The entire neighborhood is well-done. So with that, you'll see my full support on your item, and I look forward to meeting your dogs one day in person.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
That's item number forty-eight, and it's a variance for a garage for Mrs. Oakley at variance five-two-four-five-one on Skipworth. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. The motion to approve item number forty-eight carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item has been requested to go forward to City Council on March the nineteenth.
Thank you. Have a good night. Going on now to item number fifty, which is VAR five-two-four-six-two. The applicant owner is Jerry Vazola. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a fifteen-foot front yard setback where a twenty-foot setback is required for a proposed accessory structure, Class II garage at three-two-nine Lorenzi Street, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this request is for a variance to allow a side-loaded detached accessory structure, Class II garage, to be constructed in the front yard setback, with a front yard setback of fifteen feet where twenty feet is required. The site is located at three-twenty-nine Lorenzi Street in the R1, the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district. The proposed structure is inconsistent with the architectural character of the surrounding community, as it cannot be constructed in a harmonious manner. No substantial evidence has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship is self-imposed. Staff recommends denial of this request. Please note, additional letters of support and protest were received after posting.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? And sir, if you'll state your name and address?
Jerry Vazola, 329 Lorenzi Street, 89107. I'm a little nervous. I have pheromone tremors. I'm sorry.
Oh, please, just relax and tell us about what you want to do.
I have a hobby of Model A's, and I belong to the Las Vegas Model A Club. And my neighborhood is, it's old. It was like in '75, and I bought this house a couple of years ago, and I'm just, everybody just loves me. I have some signatures, too, and they just love the idea to improve in the neighborhood. And I need it for, I don't know if you can see my toy or not, but anyway, I'm using it for a garage. I'm only having a one-car garage door. When you pull in, I'm not disturbing the sidewalks. You drive in and you turn left into it, and I don't know. Oh, my, it's my toy. And I wanted to make a little shop just for it when I retire. I just turned 62, so I don't really know what to say. I know I'm in, everybody in the neighborhood says my house since I moved in is just improving everything, and the two on side of me, I've already got one of them fixing his house up, and they just, we're trying to make the neighborhood nicer. But it's a benefit to me, you know? I don't know.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow. Does that mature tree, is that going to be taken out? Or does that's?
Well, that's coming out. That's coming out. I want to have two, I want to have two beauti, you know, I'm re-landscaping the whole front yard. See, there's going to have a window in front of the garage, and I'm going to have two new tr-
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Hi, Mr. Rizaldo.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, so I visited your house. I didn't go to the door, but I did sit in your front yard, and I looked around, and the one thing I noticed on your street, sir, is that nobody has a separate garage from the house and the yard, so this would be a first for that old neighborhood.
The courtyard would be beautiful.
I'm sure it would be.
And then, and we just have a lot of weird things on our street.
I know. I live around the corner, trust me.
Oh, well, good.
But here's the thing. I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for denial tonight so that it can go on to City Council from here, and then we'll have time in between now and the next meeting to, they can sit with you and give you maybe some other options that would be more conducive to the entire neighborhood, because this, sir, in my opinion, is just a little bit out there. It's like nothing else on the entire street. You know what I mean?
But it's a benefit, okay.
I know. But I have to go with land use, but the Councilwoman's office would be happy to give you some input. I'm saying no at this level, and I'm going to staff, follow staff's recommendations tonight as much as I don't want to for denial.
Who do I see?
You're going to see Council, he'll, Mr. Rankin will tell you what to do from here. Okay? You did a nice job. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to follow staff's recommendations. Go ahead.
Chairman, through you. It's about integrating, you know, your structure into your, or this accessory structure into your primary structure, and also about having, you know, a harmonious look. We throw those terms around quite a bit, but harmonious and compatible amongst everything in your neighborhood. And just looking at some of the pictures, it just doesn't look that way. Just throw one thought out for you before City Council comes up. Maybe you could look at enclosing a portion in the backyard, so it doesn't interfere with the look of the overall street.
If you seen the neighborhood, you'd-
So, thank you. So with that, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for denial on number 50, which is variance 52462 tonight. Thank you, sir, for coming out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, and please note that a yes vote is for denial. Please post. Motion to approve, excuse me, motion to deny item number 50 carries.
Mr. Chairman, please note that this item will go forward to the March 19th City Council meeting.
Thank you. We'll move on now to related items 51, 52, and 53, which is SUP 52437. The applicant is Storage 1. Owner is FNBN-CMLON1 LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed mini-storage facility with a waiver of the requirement to provide a retail or office facade on all exterior walls at the southeast corner of Farm Road and Oso Blanca Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 52 is SUP 52438. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed truck rental use with a waiver to allow a 130-foot distance separation from a single-family detached dwelling where 330 feet is required in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. The last related item is item number 53, which is SDR 52440. For possible action on request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-story 122,325 square-foot mini-storage facility with a waiver of the town center development standards to allow 10% open space where 20% open space is required in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this project proposes to, proposes 750 storage units, 36 covered oversized vehicle storage spaces, and five rental trucks onsite. Staff is supporting the waiver request. The waiver not to provide the ground-level retail frontage is appropriate as the applicant has screened that with an eight-foot-high block wall and a lush landscape area. In regards to the distance separation, this site is separated by Oso Blanca, which is a major thoroughfare, and a very large street, and staff supports that request. In regards to the open space of mini-storage, it doesn't require a lot of open space, as it's not a gathering area as general retail tends to be, and that was the intent of the open space requirement in the SC and GCTC land use designations. Staff recommends approval of all the applications. Please note, we have received additional comments after publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, Las Vegas, on behalf of the applicant. To my left is Mr. Jim Maservi, who is a principal of Storage 1, 2900 South Durangle Drive in Las Vegas. We do want to thank staff for their recommendations of approval on all three items. I would specifically like to recognize three members of the planning staff, Mike Howe and Steve Swanton, who have worked with us over the last three months to make some changes to this site plan that we felt were very beneficial, and by working with them, we were actually able to avoid an additional application that would have required a variance for this application. I also want to thank Renee Carlson, who has worked with me specifically to help get me through the electronic submittal process, which we found rather cumbersome to begin with, but we worked it out. We do accept all of the recommendations and conditions as proposed by staff, and with that, we'll just be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Genzer. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goings, you first.
Just real quick for Mr. Genzer, the time you were here, you'd done it in chisel and slate, now it's moved to a computer, so my how times have changed.
There you go. And see, even I was able to get through it, so.
I have a brief comment through the chair. This is a beautiful facade here. It's a kind of a difficult piece of property, but you've done some wonderful things with it, as you have, you know, all your products around town, so, you know, I understand the parking and open space, but based on the nature of this business, I don't think we have to worry about it becoming something else down the road and those becoming issues, so you'll see my full support for this.
Mr. Chairman, for staff of the applicant, in looking at the backup, this property is controlled by the Sorenson Group, right there, the property owner?
Correct.
And as much as I'd love to vote on this item, and I did speak with Mr. Genzer, I do have some ongoing conversations with the Sorenson Group, and will abstain on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Item 31, SUP 524-
What's 51, Commissioner?
I'm sorry. Let me put my glasses on. Item 51, SUP 52437. The motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number 51 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Item 52, SUP 52438. The motion is also to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. The motion to approve item number 52 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
And item 53, SDR 52440. The motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to approve item number 53 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal, and we also congratulate the applicant on his electronic submittal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, gentlemen. At this time, we're going to take a short break.
Let's call it a pipe.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started again. We're going to begin now with item number fifty-four, which is SUP 52442. The applicant is Ride Now LLC. The owner is Cam-Mac for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,795-square-foot motorcycle slash motor scooter sales use with a waiver to allow a minimum gross floor area under 7,000 square feet at 990 North Buffalo Drive in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff can support the waiver request as the provided square footage is adequate to display all of the motorcycles and motor scooters within the enclosed building. To ensure that does occur, a condition of approval has been added prohibiting display outside of the enclosed building. As such, staff recommends approval of the special use permit. Please note, we have received additional comments since publication.
Thank you. And can we hear from the applicant, please? And sir, if you'll state your name and address?
Yes, Brian Hauser, 804 Sistine Street, 89144. On behalf of the applicant, they feel that the building is suitable for their sales of the motorcycles. It's a new application that they're providing. High-end Indian motorcycles will be the primary sellout of that facility. Right now is very strong in the community. They've been in Vegas for years and occupied multiple properties around town. They feel that the floor space is adequate and that the location provides great access to their potential customers in the area.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow. Did I hear tell that there wasn't going to be any motorcycles displayed outside? Because I have an issue with that. And this is the thing. Some of the, back where I came from, there's a motorcycle guy that kind of put in a green area out there with rocks and stuff and displayed his motorcycles like they were like going over a trail or something. And it really looks nice. I mean, and it breaks up the parking lot, too, to have a little bit of green and some shrubbery out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, just a disclosure, I purchased parts from Ride Now before, but I don't think that would affect me any greater or lesser than anybody else. And I just wanted to say they've always ran a really clean operation, and I would expect the same from them out of this shop.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quine?
Hi, Brian. I visited the property site. It's ideal for your establishment. I just had one question, and I'm sorry to call you this week. We had a bombarded calls on other items, but are people going to be able to test drive these motorcycles? And if so, where?
Yes, we provided a test drive route with our application that shows that they would direct away from the residential that's nearby and the apartments, and they would go more towards Summerland Parkway around at the 215 and facilitate, you know, test drives.
Okay, just a little take like that. Okay. The other thing, Brian, we are really dead set against any motorcycles on the sidewalks. We are dead set against them in the parking lot for sale. We do not want to clutter that piece of property up with any signage that's inappropriate. So although I agree with staff's recommendation for approval, I would like to, through Director Flynn, put a one-year review on this application, administrative review, so someone can come out and just check up on you. Not that I don't trust you, but you just never know. We just don't want them outside, and we don't want them on the sidewalk, and it's Councilwoman's, one of her pet peeves, and it's like, I like to follow through with that as well. So with that, I'd like to, if no one else has anything to say, I will follow staff's recommendation this evening for approval of SUP 52442, adding an administrative review of one year, just to make sure that the place looks as good as it does today. So good luck to you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that condition of approval that's being added, basically the condition will be that there shall be a one-year administrative review required upon the issuance of a business license for the business.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, and that's to approve item number fifty-four.
Yeah, following all staff's recommendations with that added condition, please.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion to approve item fifty-four carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item goes forward to the March nineteenth City Council meeting.
We're now going to go to Director's Business, beginning with item number fifty-five, which is TXT 52502. The applicant slash owner is the city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC Chapter nineteen point twelve related to permitted uses and Chapter nineteen point eighteen related to definitions and measures to add medical marijuana dispensaries, facilities for the production of edible marijuana products or marijuana-infused products, and marijuana cultivation facilities as permissible uses by adding zoning district applicability descriptions and definitions for these activities as they are contemplated by SB 374 of the Nevada revised statutes and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation, however. Steph, if we could have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. What we have before you this evening is a proposed text amendment to allow medical marijuana facilities in the city of Las Vegas. What I'd like to do is give an abbreviated PowerPoint presentation. You all saw a much longer presentation at the Planning Commission Workshop that we had last week. So I'm just going to confine this to a little bit of background. I'll go through the proposed ordinance, keeping it primarily to just the things that have changed based on your comments at the workshop last week, and then we will open it up to the discussion. Let me just go ahead and start by giving you just a little bit of background on medical marijuana. First of all, just to be clear, marijuana is still federally illegal. However, twenty-one states have approved medical or recreational marijuana programs. There is a Department of Justice memo issued in August of 2013 that identifies low risk for enforcement if there are eight issues that are addressed by the states in permitting medical marijuana. In developing the land use regulations and the forthcoming business license regulations, we're trying to adhere to those eight issues for low risk of enforcement, and so that's driving quite a number of the recommendations that you'll see coming out for both land use and licensing. In terms of the state of Nevada, the bill to allow medical marijuana facilities was signed into law in June of 2013. Relative to the city of Las Vegas, our city council just last week officially directed staff to proceed with developing regulations for land use and licensing of medical marijuana facilities. At that hearing, they also directed us to work closely with Clark County so that our regulations are fairly similar, and they also directed us to work to prepare these regulations in advance of the state opening their application cycle. So that is the direction that we received from City Council last week. I just want to make it clear for the public that City Council did not vote to approve medical marijuana facilities last week, but rather directed us to proceed with licensing and land use regulations, which they will then consider at a later date in time. The state has put a number of regulations based on the Senate Bill 374 that went through. Number one, in the bill itself, there is an implementation date of April 2014. That's kind of the date that we are working against in terms of developing our regulations. In the bill, it lists four different permitted types of facilities, dispensaries, and specifically in Clark County, a total of forty dispensaries are allowed. The language says that no jurisdiction may have more than 25% of those forty, and so that means that we would be eligible up to a maximum of ten dispensaries. It also allows production facilities for edible or infused products, cultivation facilities, and testing laboratories. There are no limits in the state bill relative to the number of facilities for production, cultivation, or testing. There is separation distance requirements in the state law. I'll get into those in just a moment. There are also locational requirements, that they must be located in either commercial or industrial districts or overlays, and must be in enclosed buildings. And then there's also some very general language in the state law relative to the appearance of those facilities. There's quite a number of things that really aren't clearly defined in the state law or the proposed draft regulations. A lot of these things we will be addressing through our licensing regulations, but we just wanted you to be aware, there's quite a number of things that municipalities need to consider in developing medical marijuana regulations. Let me get into our proposed regulations. This is what we have before you this evening and the proposed regulations that we sent out to you. And again, this is fairly similar to what we presented to you last week at the workshop, and I'll just point out any of the changes that we have made. First of all, relative to dispensaries, in terms of the locations, we would propose that they be located in our C2 General Commercial District, CM Commercial Industrial District, in our M Industrial Districts. We would also request that no dispensaries be located in our tourist corridors, so that would be Las Vegas Boulevard and Fremont Street. In terms of location, the Planning Commission Workshop, we presented two options to you. One was to create a district. The other was to disperse them throughout the city. Based on your comments, what we heard was that you would prefer to see them dispersed throughout the city rather than clustered in a district. So based on that, what we have proposed for you this evening is to locate the dispensaries in each of our sector plan areas. What we've recommended is starting out with one per sector area, so one in the southeast, one in the southwest, one in the Centennial Hills Sector. The reason why we would like to start with just three dispensaries is, again, we haven't done this before. This is new to us in terms of regulating an illegal substance. And so what we would propose is to start off with three dispensaries, and then for the next application cycle, if we feel that we're comfortable with the regulations that we have in place and we've been operating efficiently and protecting the public welfare, we would then expand that number. In terms of separation distance requirements, basically the same as we had proposed to you at the workshop last week. One of the comments we received from the commission at the Planning Commission Workshop was increasing the separation distance from churches. And so you'll see there in the red text, based on those comments, we would propose adding a thousand-foot distance separation from any church or house of worship. I will tell you, we've done a preliminary mapping exercise to see what those separation distances would do. As we increase the separation distance from churches from 300 feet, which is the language in the state law, to 1,000 feet, that does drop down significantly the number of properties that would qualify to have dispensaries. And so I just wanted to put that out there for you to be aware of. That does drop down the potential properties that would qualify. And then the other separation distances are the same as what you saw at the workshop last week. In terms of the standards on the facility size, we had proposed a 3,500-square-foot minimum size for the dispensaries. We've added language to that so that there is adequate interior space for waiting or queuing areas to address one of the concerns that was brought up last week. Also with the signage, essentially the same standards, one wall signed 10 square feet. Based on the comments last week, we've also added a limit to the height, so 10 square feet and two feet in height is the maximum that would be permitted. And again, we're proposing that the elevations and signage be approved by the Downtown Design Review Committee. Moving on to the next category, production facilities and cultivation facilities, essentially the zoning regulations would be more or less the same for these facilities, permitted in the commercial industrial or the industrial zoning districts. I just wanted to clarify, there was a comment last week at the Planning Commission Workshop, how are we going to limit the amount of cultivation facilities in the city of Las Vegas? Obviously, going back to the Department of Justice memo where we need to basically have a closed system, we need to be careful with the amount of cultivation, that it matches up with the amount of dispensaries that we have. And I just wanted to indicate to you all that it's not going to be covered under the zoning regulations. That's something that we would be looking at under our licensing regulations, the actual operational procedures. So I just wanted to point that out because that point did come up last week at the workshop. In terms of separation distance, again, adding the separation distance from a church or actually increasing the separation distance from a church house of worship, we've added that language in there. Moving on to the production cultivation standards, I think we talked last week about the need to have air filtration for these types of facilities. The language that we would propose is that air filtration systems to be designed by Nevada licensed engineer be provided for these facilities. And so hopefully that will address those concerns with odor control, and then again with the signage, the same type of sign requirements as we had for the dispensaries. For the testing laboratories, what we are proposing to do, as I indicated at our workshop, is that we're not creating a separate category for the laboratories, but rather we're going to expand the definition of our current laboratory use to include the testing of medical marijuana and allow that in the zoning districts where we currently allow those. We had a question come up if the professional office and office zoning districts would qualify under the state law where it says that they have to be located in commercial industrial districts, and office is considered to be a commercial district, and so we would be okay in terms of having that use in those districts. As I had mentioned at the workshop last week, there's still quite a bit that would be addressed, not under the zoning code, which we have before you this evening, but rather under our licensing code. And so things such as the hours of operation, et cetera, the list that you see here, those are things that we would look at as part of our licensing regulations, which will be coming forth here in the next couple of months. In terms of our timeline, here we are tonight, February the 11th, considering our land use regulations. As you're aware, the Planning Commission makes recommendation on land use and forwards those recommendations to the city council. During the months of March, April, and May, what we intend to do is to have public workshops on both our land use regulations and also our proposed licensing regulations. We have the presentation to city council that would then follow once we go through the public workshop process. What we intend to do is to begin first in terms of the licensing regulations with the application requirements to make sure, in order to meet the state deadline, that applicants know what they will need to submit as part of those applications. And then because the operational regulations may take us a little bit longer to implement and aren't necessary for the application cycle per se, we would give ourselves a little bit more time to adopt those. So what you might see is the licensing regulations would be a two-part process for us, coming first forward with the application requirements, and then secondly, with the operational requirements. Again, the direction that we receive from city council is to have regulations in place prior to the state opening its application cycle. While we understand that the draft regulations would be approved sometime in March is really the deadline that they had indicated to us, there is the requirement that they have a 45-day notice window for the application cycle and then a 10-day period in which to submit the applications. And so we are intending to have our land use and our licensing regulations in place prior to the state opening its application cycle. And so that's the timeline that we're on and why we're working quickly to try and do that. With that, I would like to just turn it over briefly to our city attorney, who has a statement to make, and then we will go ahead and open it up to your comments and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Chairman, I hope I'll keep this brief. I have a couple of things I want to go over before getting into the substance of the proposed ordinance. One is some of the things that have been said on the record and where we're at with respect to giving you legal advice, because there's been some either inaccurate reporting of it, or there are no offense to the reporters in the room, but there, back when this issue became public, I recognized that voting for an ordinance, drafting an ordinance which would legalize and enable the distribution of a Schedule I controlled substance implicates felony statutes under federal law in spite of state law. Let me read to you 1.2, which is our rule of representation and allocation of authority between client and lawyer. And before I read it, let me state on the record that every lawyer in the state, whether you're a public lawyer like myself or you represent private interests, is subject to these canons of ethics. And some canons of ethics are permissible and some are mandatory, and violation of mandatory canons of ethics can lead to disbarment. So I think this is a very serious issue. I hope that other people don't take it lightly. I certainly don't. And this is the language that I have to live with, and we all have to live with. "A lawyer shall not counsel a client to engage or assist a client in conduct that the lawyer knows is criminal or fraudulent, but a lawyer may discuss the legal consequences of any proposed course of conduct with the client and may counsel or assist a client to make a good faith effort to determine the validity scope and meaning of the application of law." Well, the first part of that is pretty obvious, and I think as a result of the first part, I was certainly compelled to ask the Nevada State Bar for an opinion as to whether or not a public lawyer in my position can ethically, under 1.2 subsection D, advise my client to draft an ordinance for my client and then advise my client to pass it, knowing that it may well implicate criminal federal law. That request for opinion was sent to the Nevada State Bar in October of last year, and as of today, I still do not have an answer. It was my hope, because we put a moratorium on medical marijuana applications, that I would have an answer long before we got to this stage in the deliberation. That would be a comfortable result, but we don't live in a comfortable world, and so I have to live with the result that we have. The result that we have is that I have talked to state bar council, I've talked to the chairman of the Board of Governors, or the director of the Board of Governors, and the Nevada Supreme Court. I have brought to their attention that I'm not the only public lawyer that is in a position of having to give advice on a timeline that's much shorter than I expected without a legal opinion. I think the answer to the dilemma is to simply add additional language recognizing the political reality of the 21st century. This language was written at a time where you didn't see conflicts between federal criminal law and state criminal law. But as the director indicated, we now have 21 states and probably growing, or we're going to continue to see this trend in one form or another, whether it's medical marijuana or recreational. The state of Washington adopted recreational marijuana, and they have the same canons of ethics that we do. Their model rules that almost every state has the identical language. What they did recently is adopt language, which I have sent to the Board of Governors, to state bar council, and which I hope will be considered by the Nevada Supreme Court as a way out of this that honestly addresses the conflict and allows lawyers like myself and private practice lawyers to give advice to their client without fear of losing their legal license. The language that I am proposing, again, taken right from the state of Washington, would add to the language I just read. "Notwithstanding any other provision of these rules, a lawyer shall not be in violation of these rules or subject to discipline for engaging in conduct or for counseling or assisting a client to engage in conduct by virtue of a specific provision of Nevada state law. And implementing regulations is either permitted or within affirmative defense to prosecution under state law solely because that same conduct standing alone may violate federal law." I think that very directly addresses the conflict. I think it very directly would give us permission to address the needs of our client in legally putting together ordinances, and in the case of some of the private practice lawyers in the audience, in advising their clients how to obtain these licenses and open these dispensaries. I am hopeful that the Board of Governors will consider this language, and if they agree, forward it to the Nevada Supreme Court as soon as possible so that they may, at my request, hold an expedited hearing so that we can know once and for all whether or not we are covered in giving legal advice on this issue. Having said that, I don't have the luxury of having that code change tonight. What I have is what I know, which is I can't legally advise you to break the law. But what I can advise you is, in a perfect world, if this were not in conflict with federal law, and if this code change were changed hypothetically, what would this law before this board look like? And what comments could I make that would be constructive in making it clearer to understand, making it clearer so we don't have challenges in the future, and make it clearer for individuals to understand what our requirements are when you apply for a license? Having said that, the first thing I am going to recommend is a preamble to the language that Flynn read earlier. Let me also give a little history here because it's necessary if you understand the preamble that I'm recommending. In 2009, the Department of Justice, through Deputy Attorney General Ogden, wrote a letter to the United States Attorneys around the country indicating that the federal government was not going to use its resources to prosecute individuals who used medical marijuana. Now, I'm paraphrasing, I'm oversimplifying the memo, but that was the gist of the memo. That was a directive to the U.S. Attorney's Offices and to all the federal departments under the Department of Justice where the priorities would be used when it came to drug enforcement. In 2011, a follow-up memo was issued by Deputy Attorney General Cole. Deputy Attorney General Cole addressed the issue of dispensaries. The first letter talked about medical marijuana. It didn't talk about how to obtain it. And so the issue was whether or not dispensaries would be something the federal government would go after, and the memo was less than clear, mandating a follow-up memo in 2013 where Deputy Attorney General Cole indicated that dispensaries would also be something the federal government would not spend its enforcement resources on, provided it met the guidelines set forth in that memo. One could reasonably argue that but for those two memos, nobody would have considered at the state level or local level legalizing this. I think in reliance on those memos, the state of Nevada passed the law that it passed this last legislative session, and I think 20 other states did the same thing in reliance on these memos. And I think the city of Las Vegas, in reliance on those memos, the Department of Justice memos, the head law enforcement agency in the country, relying on their word and relying on the state of Nevada, is considering this ordinance today. I think a preamble in short order should indicate that it is because of the October 2009 memo and the August 2011 memo, or the August 2013 memo, that the Nevada State Legislature acted the way they acted and why we're acting the way we acted, because I think in the future, it should well be known, be part of the record, that we relied on the federal government's word in going forward with this. I think that preamble would be helpful. Having said that, I have a couple of questions for Flynn, and then a couple of brief comments, and then I'll finish. First question is, when it comes to shipping containers on-site, are you looking to prohibit them completely or to just limit the amount of things you could store there or the period of time you could store them there, or just complete abolition?
The intent of the language is to prohibit the use of shipping containers, so to prohibit them completely.
So you wouldn't be able to store anything for any period of time in shipping containers?
Correct.
Thank you. The next one is a comment, and that is the term adequate internal customer waiting area is something I think we'll want to work with you on if there is direction to return this to the city attorney's office for final ordinance form so that we make sure that we define exactly what that is, because I know that that's going to be in the eye of the beholder, but I think I understand the drift of your language.
Okay.
The next question is, do you intend for the Downtown Design Review Committee to review every single one of the designs in spite of the fact they're outside the downtown area?
Yes, the intent is that we would expand the duties of the Downtown Design Review Committee. They would then become the Design Review Committee, and that would then be included in their responsibilities.
That is precisely what I was hoping you would say. And that's the only comments I have at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to listen to Commissioner Moody, because he's also a lawyer, and I'm a lawyer myself.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So unlike Mr. Gerbick, my role tonight is not advising the Planning Commission, but I do wear two hats. One is an attorney and one is a member of the Planning Commission, and since my vote could be considered to be advocating a law that would benefit the city of Las Vegas financially, which may be at odds with federal law, out of an abundance of caution and perhaps an overabundance of caution, and in light of the money I've spent on my law degree and how much I value my license, I'm at least going to reserve my right to abstain based on how this discussion goes today. I, too, would appreciate some type of direction from the state bar or the Supreme Court of Nevada, and maybe the discussion that we've had tonight may help spur that along to let them know just how serious we're taking this so that we could get some direction on that. So that's my comment. So that's my comment.
I somewhat echo Commissioner Moody's comments in that regard, but I think it's essential that we do add that preamble language as suggested by Mr. Jerbik into this, because I do believe that does show the reliance, and it gives us, you know, that we have deliberated on this issue, and we have, you know, given it thoughtful consideration as well. And I sincerely urge the rest of this commission to adopt that preamble language, not only for me personally, but, you know, for Mr. Jerbik, Mr. Moody, and the various lawyers who are representing clients out here before us. And so with that said, I think we'll go ahead and move on. This is kind of a weird thing procedurally. So, Mr. Jerbik, I'm going to ask you, should we kind of just, before we get moving, vote on that preamble?
You can certainly take it in pieces if you want to wait for all public comment and then vote on that, or if you want to take one comment at a time. I don't think it's inappropriate to vote on the preamble right now if you feel that you would like to get that issue off the table.
And is this something that would require public comment on the preamble?
I think that any attorney who wants to tonight comment on it may, of course, I don't have the exact language in front of them, I won't have it until after I obviously get my opinion from the bar or get the change to the model rule. But I do think the preamble has definitely got everything to everybody's advantage and nothing that would disadvantage anyone.
I think what I'm going to do is, I'm going to hear a comment from Commissioner Goines, and then, Mr. Jerbik, I'm going to ask you to read that preamble one more time, if you don't mind. And then I'm going to just put that out as an addition to the ordinance, and open it up for public comment as well, and then we'll vote on that portion, then we'll go into the meat, if that's acceptable to everybody on the commission.
Commissioner Goines?
Just a quick question, while I appreciate the fact that the two lawyers kind of put some protection on themselves. I, too, spent a lot of money on a degree that wasn't in law, but how does that affect us that are non-lawyers on the planning commission, the fact that we're not given advice, but how does that keep us, non-lawyers, out of the perception of we could be violating the law as well? And is there any, for lack of a better word, protection or anything to be read for us?
Unfortunately, I don't think there is any protection, but if I limited my advice to saying that that preamble helps only the lawyers on either side, it helps everyone. It helps the staff, it helps individuals who apply for these, because, of course, one of the fears, of several fears, but one of them, obviously, is what does the future hold? What happens if you get another attorney general in the future who decides to not go with these opinion letters and goes back to enforcing the laws written and Congress doesn't change it? I think it's important to have a record that but for the federal government, for want of a better term, giving everybody the wink and the nod and the green light, nobody'd be sitting here having this discussion. Not here, not in Washington, not in Denver, not anywhere. And I think in the future, if worse were to come to worse, and somebody were to change their mind, and I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know, I think it is important to have this record made as to why this board did what it did, and why these folks applied for these licenses like they did, and why, Commissioner, you voted the way you did.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I do need to make a comment that is subtly different than the attorneys here and the non-attorneys, because I am concerned about, I guess, self-preservation a little bit at times. But I actually hold privileged licenses that are federal licenses, and they are licenses that are subject to an immediate revocation in some cases. None of this, have I been able to figure, rises to that. But I do want to, I think it's important for this conversation to go forward, but I do want to reserve the right to abstain at the end of this, and I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Commissioner. And so, right now, at this juncture, Mr. Jerbik, I would ask again that you read your preamble language, and then I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Again, thank you, Chairman. I did not read it the first time, so I'll paraphrase this time. Whatever I read the first time is much closer to what the final version will be. But essentially, the preamble would be to the effect that in October of 2009, Deputy Attorney General Ogden, with the United States Department of Justice, issued a memorandum indicating to all United States attorneys that medical marijuana, the use of medical marijuana, would not be pursued by the Department of Justice. That memo, under Department of Justice, I didn't say this the first time, come many of the law enforcement branches, DEA, FBI, and things like that. And so this memo indicated to everybody in Department of Justice that the federal resources would not be used going after individuals who possessed or used medical marijuana. In 2011, Deputy Attorney General Cole wrote a memo addressing medical marijuana dispensaries. That wasn't entirely clear, so in October of 2013, Deputy Attorney General Cole addressed a memo, again, to all United States attorneys and Department of Justice members, indicating that the Department of Justice would not prosecute federally or enforce the law against medical marijuana dispensaries, provided they followed the guidelines set forth in the memo. I believe Chairman Flynn indicated, our director Flynn, indicated that there were eight, I promoted you, that there were eight areas of concern to the Department of Justice, and if you operated within those eight areas, you wouldn't be prosecuted. It was in reliance of those memos that I believe the Nevada State Legislature followed suit with 20 other states in creating a law allowing the legalization of medical marijuana dispensaries. And I believe the reliance on those federal memos issued by the Department of Justice and the law of the state of Nevada, that this board is relying on those and going forward with consideration of an ordinance tonight that would ultimately legalize medical marijuana dispensaries. I think that's pretty close to what I said the first time.
Thank you very much. On that issue, and that issue alone, I will entertain public comment. And sir, if you could state your name and your address, please?
Thank you, Commissioner, members of the commission chairman, members of staff, and city attorney Brad Jerbik. My name is Attorney Bruce Gale. My law office address is 830 Las Vegas Boulevard South. I just have a couple of comments briefly regarding what Mr. Jerbik said. I think it's great that he's done what he's had to do, and it obviously was a Hobson's choice, and he was in a predicament. I would like, Mr. Jerbik, if you would read the proposed amendment to Nevada law of professional conduct 1.2 again?
I'll be happy to. The original 1.2 would have an additional sentence added to it, and that additional sentence would read as follows. "Notwithstanding any other provision of these rules, a lawyer shall not be in violation of these rules or subject to discipline for engaging in conduct or for counseling or assisting a client to engage in conduct by virtue of a specific provision of Nevada state law and implementing regulations is either permitted or within an affirmative defense to prosecution under state law solely because that same conduct standing alone may violate federal law."
Okay. I don't have the objection to the proposed Nevada law of professional conduct that Mr. Jerbik is proposing, and again, that's for the state bar and the Board of Governors and the Supreme Court of Nevada to adopt, which hopefully they'll act on promptly to assist y'all. I just want to clarify a couple of things, and what Mr. Jerbik talked about. The third Cole letter, I think it was dated August 29, 2013, for the record, for whatever that's worth. Secondly, I, and again, I'm trying to help y'all, I have somewhat of a different opinion on why the legislature did what they did in 2013 in the major amendments to NRS Chapter 453A and Incident Bill 374. My understanding chronology was in September 2010, when all the dispensaries were closed down. There were some, many people who were charged criminally with possession of controlled substances, trafficking, and their cases originated in justice court, and they went to district court, and then there were two district court judges, Judge Smith and Judge Mosely, who had cases before them. In front of Mosely was the Schwindorf case, and in front of Smith, it was the Hamilton case. And it was Judge Mosely who ruled in the Schwindorf case that the application of NRS 43A as applied in that case was unconstitutional, because under Article IV, Section 38 of the Nevada Constitution, which provided the legislature should provide an adequate means of supply, the legislature didn't fulfill its duty. So I think that, those cases, is what prompted the legislature to do what they did in 2013. I don't know if it was so much the prior two Cole letters, but anyway, I don't know if that helps y'all or not, and that's all I have to say. And then I'd like to come back when you have comment period on the proposed ordinance.
Certainly. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Sir, if you could state your name and address, please, and remember, we're talking about this preamble.
Yes, sir. Adam Sternberg, 2800 South Highland Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89109. I like this preamble with the 1.21 in there to protect all of the lawyers involved in this. I think it would be important to include doctors in this language as well, protect the Nevada doctors. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe we're adding this to the ordinance, the language for 1.2D as suggested, that's something that's going to be done completely separate from what we're doing tonight. That can only be done by the Board of Governors with the state bar. So what we're really talking about is adding a preamble to the ordinance that we're considering tonight. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion as it pertains to this preamble issue, and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, before they go, I would like to, based on the comments by Mr. Gale, I don't have any problem amending the preamble slightly, just to say that we're the ones relying on the attorney general's advice and on the state of Nevada's legislation. I don't want to make any presumption as to what the legislature actually relied on, but it seems likely they would be very mindful of the fact that they got a green light from the feds.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? Then I'll entertain a motion to add the suggested preamble language to the ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar, and so, let's have a vote. Please post. The motion to add to the proposed ordinance tonight, the preamble language suggested by city attorney Jerbik carries, with noting an abstention by Commissioner Moody. Okay, now for the remainder, I will now open it up for public comment for discussion on the remainder of the proposed ordinance. Mr. Gale, if you'll state your name and address again, please?
Attorney Bruce L. Gale. My law office address is 830 Las Vegas Boulevard South, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101-6723. Do you need my residence address in the city of Las Vegas?
Just your business address is fine, or whatever you feel comfortable giving.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, or Chairman, members of the commission, Director Flag. I have a few comments regarding the proposed ordinance, and I'll refer you to Title 19.12070. And I'm basing this based on, some of my comments based on the draft ordinance as it was as of last Tuesday, last Wednesday, and then I have some additional comments regarding the new proposed changes today. The first item I'd like to talk about is...
Let me interrupt you for one second here, and if you don't mind, if I could get a show of hands how many people are expected to speak tonight, I would appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to limit comments to about three or four minutes, you know, so if we can kind of keep it within those timeframes, I would appreciate it.
No problem, Commissioner, I'll be very brief. I first want to refer you to the medical marijuana cultivation facility section, specifically the minimum special use permit requirements, subsection 1. It provides no medical marijuana cultivation facility may be located within 1,000 feet of any medical marijuana dispensary. Now, under Senate Bill 374, there is a statutory preference, one of the 10 factors under Senate Bill 374, Section 11.7, subsection 8, it is, I'm quoting, "whether the applicant has an integrated plan for the care, quality, and safekeeping of medical marijuana from seed to sale." The other thing I want to address is, before I make my point, is under the latest draft of the regulations by Division of Public and Behavioral Health, there is a regulation regarding, hold on, I just drew a blank here. Okay, well, let me continue. Oh, anyway, so you have this statutory preference for seed to sale. I'm sorry, under the regulations, you can't have, there's four types of medical marijuana establishments, as y'all well know, and you can't, under the latest draft of the regulations, you can't have a financial interest in an independent testing laboratory and any of the other three. So the seed to sale language means to a lot of people there's a preference for vertical integration. So to have a cultivation facility, a dispensary, and a production facility. Senate Bill 374 does talk about each, under section 10.5, each medical marijuana establishment must be located in a separate building. I don't have a problem with that part. I just think this distance requirement of 1,000 feet is excessive, because if applicants are going to apply for all three, why should there be a 1,000-feet separation requirement? If there's commercial property and there are separate freestanding buildings and they're right next to each other, and you want to, and the cultivation facility wants to transport its product to its commonly, to its dispensary, and then also to some of the, to the production facility, I just don't see why there should be a 1,000-foot requirement. And so, the other issue I have is, it says no medical marijuana cultivation facility may be located within 200 feet from any residential zoning district. As y'all well know, on a lot of the major intersections in the city of Las Vegas, you have commercial property, and that property line, the back of that property line, you have residential property. So there's a lot of other commercial uses of property where they abut, the property line abuts residential property. So I guess I've got a problem with the 200-feet requirement regarding that. Similarly, under the medical marijuana production facility, minimum special use permit requirements, you have the same, it says no medical marijuana production facility may be located within 1,000 feet of any medical marijuana dispensary. And also the 200, no 200 feet from any land zone residential. I had the same arguments regarding that. Thirdly, I had the same argument regarding the medical marijuana dispensary, but this language is a little more inclusive and broader. It says no medical marijuana dispensary may be located within 1,000 feet of any other medical marijuana dispensary, medical marijuana cultivation facility, medical marijuana production facility. So this language is basically nullifying the seed to sale preference and the seed to sale factor under Senate Bill 374. Finally, that's, I hope I've gone within my time limit, and that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Who's next? And I know you've already stated your name, but you need to do it.
Adam Sternberg, 2800 South Highland Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89109. Thank you. I just have a couple of quick things in regards to distillation and extraction. There are safe ways to do this, I think it needs to be considered and not eliminated for possibilities. Automobile air conditioning services have these strict EPA requirements with closed-loop systems that are implemented in these industrial areas all the time. This extraction... This extraction process can be done under the same safe manners as this, so, uh, I think that that should be considered and, uh, taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I got a problem with taking the neon signs off of this. Las Vegas is supposed to be the neon city, and here you're restricting the sign. I mean, that is ridiculous. One other, two more comments. Number one, who is sovereign here? Are the bureaucrats sovereign or the people sovereign? The people voted on this. The Supreme, the Constitution only guarantees one thing, and that's majority rule. The people spoke on this. That's all there should be to that. And Commissioner Truesdale. Now, that feed store goes south over there. Just thinking of how they can grow it in the back and you could have a beautiful script marijuana sign scrolling around the back instead of that Purina Chow sign up there. It'd look real nice.
Thank you, sir.
Vicki Higgins, two-oh-five Norland Street. I'd like to reiterate what Adam mentioned about the closed-loop system for concentrates and all the different methods of concentrating this. This is going to be the future. Vaporizing is proving to be a preferred method for most patients, or for many patients nowadays, in addition to the edibles. And in relation to the fact of distance requirements between establishments, I think it would be a beneficial thing to have these establishments within a certain area or enclosed in one building, from cultivation, production, to the dispensary, all enclosed in one area. Yes, they would be individual applications, but enclosed with one area. We don't worry about transportation. I'd like to also add, some of these distance requirements are prohibitive. One of the posts I have from the twelve-nineteen statement said that no dispensary's main entrance may be closer than three-hundred feet walking distance, following along the nearest, nearest pedestrian access from the front door of the establishment to the property line of a residential or mixed use. As Mr. Gail pointed out, many of the way our buildings are set up in this town and the zoning is very, uh, puzzle-like. And I think these restrictions are going to eliminate, as you said earlier, many potential locations. If the sidewalk has to be thirty, three-hundred feet from the front entry, that's going to eliminate many potential dispensary opportunities. And I'd also like to request that not each of these establishments require a special use permit. I understand that with the dispensaries are going to be a traffic situation, we're going to have the public coming in and out. The production centers and the, and the cultivation centers are a total, total different ballpark, so the restrictions are prohibitive. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, sir. If you could state your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Ed Bernstein, five-hundred South Fourth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-one. I've been dealing with a lot of these issues for nearly forty years. Uh, and let's not forget, the basis of all this is for, on bequest and behalf of, um, of patients that need medical marijuana. So let's start with that premise, and I have a personal relationship with my own family as well as thousands of clients that, uh, over the years that I've represented. At the same time, I've represented for nearly forty years, people involved in accidents and traffic matters, and it seems to me that the, um, the provision about, um, favoring a separate dispensary from a medical, from a growing facility is ridiculous. The safest way for our community is to have as little traffic driving around town, driving throughout the county and the city, with medical marijuana in the vans, in the, in the vehicles. The, um, the legislature spent a lot of time, there's a lot of paragraphs in the law, um, dictating how you're going to move marijuana from a facility to a, from a dispensary, to the growing facility, back and forth, that type of thing. This is a public safety issue. It, this doesn't make sense, um, to have a separate thousand-feet requirement for a, um, a growing facility and, and a dispensary. You're encouraging the transportation of these things. Um, this is how we got nuclear waste, the dump out of Nevada. Essentially, you know, is all the transportation issues. This is an issue of, of, of real importance for us, um, in the community. We have to worry about these vehicles being stolen, being broken into, accidents, um, there are targets, there's a lot of issues. It makes a lot of sense that, um, that these, well, the, um, seed-to-sale provisions are effective. And, um, and also, you know, I think about where these dispensaries should be, and I, I agree, they should be spread around the community so patients have an opportunity to, um, to access them. But, you know, one of the ideal spots, let's not fool each other, is industrial road, Highland Avenue, you know, those are adult areas, and they make a lot of sense to, um, to have dispensaries in, in and around those areas. And if there's apartments within, um, two or three-hundred feet of those areas, I would like you to consider that issue as well. So I know we have a lot of, um, for instance, on Highland and industrial, a lot of strip clubs, and there may be within three-hundred feet apartment complexes within those areas. So I think that also is an issue that, that should be addressed. And one final thing, and I'll do it quickly. It's going to be very hard to open a dispensary. It's going to be very hard to have a growing facility because you cannot just go to a, a, a landlord and rent a facility because the banks are not allowing mortgages or, um, or, um, owners to lease or rent facilities for medical marijuana. All, most mortgages contain provisions that are due on, on, uh, due-on-sale clauses for these type of, um, businesses. So in addition to all the zoning regulations, you have the, the practical, um, applications of the banks and the, it's going to be very difficult to, you're going to have to own a building, main, and, uh, free and clear of a mortgage in order to have a dispensary or other facility there. It's going to be very difficult to find those kind of businesses that at the same time are accessible to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could state your name and address, please.
Jeff Gail, sixty-seven-twenty-two North Rainbow. Uh, just, uh, a point on what Eddie had just said. Um, and the state is real, wanted to take the best practices. They did a lot of research from the seed to sale, and, and the two states that it is very predominant in Washington and in Colorado, they, and in Colorado, in fact, seventy percent of the product has to be grown at the particular dispensary. So I think it is real important to keep this, and everyone who touches this, uh, medicine has to sign off on it. So there's going to be a lot of paperwork and tracking because every ounce has to be accounted for. So not only are you going to have to have the person delivering sign for it, the person who's picking up sign for it, but probably in Colorado, they're using the supervisors as well. So it's very labor-intensive. The product's going to have to transfer across the street or down the road, and there's possibilities of theft and accidents. So please consider that the, uh, the best practices in these other two states have been using, letting the dispensaries also grow their own product there as well. Thank you.
I didn't mention a couple of comments regarding the new, the revised ordinance. Will you indulge me, please? I'll be very brief, Commissioner.
Certainly. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, and I think this is, uh, an important issue, very important issue, and that's limiting dispensaries to three in the corporate City of Las Vegas, one per each sector. As y'all well know, there can be forty dispensaries in Clark County. No local jurisdiction can have more than ten. Practical reality, we have four, four local jurisdictions that can each have ten, potentially City of Las Vegas, City of Henderson, City of North Las Vegas, and the county. I've been, I've been before, uh, I was for the recommend, recommending committee back in September regarding the moratorium. I've been with y'all, I've been in front of y'all before. The city has an opportunity to have ten dispensaries, and I think they should take advantage of that for obvious business reasons and to meet the public need of the patients. There's issues that were mentioned about potential crime and the transportation. The city is big. There was discussion, uh, prior workshop, and, and y'all changed your position on the cluster idea, having them spread out. Three dispensaries in the City of Las Vegas is not sufficient. I would highly recommend y'all consider licensing or considering having ten dispensaries in the City of Las Vegas, which is the maximum y'all could have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, come on up. If you could state your name and address, please.
Hassan Choudry, three-six-zero, uh, North Oroy Grande, uh, eight-nine-zero-one-four. Respected Chair, Director, Commissioners, and City Attorney and Staff. I personally think so that talking about the dispensaries where patients are going and getting their product or getting their medicines and having the medicine manufactured in a separate facility, it makes more sense and it will be wiser for the State of Nevada to have some implications where these-
I'm sorry, sir. Couldn't hear you on that last sentence.
Sorry. So there's, these two facilities are separate, and there is another environment that is created for the delivery, delivery services in State of Nevada. It will create jobs, which will always also create licensing revenue, and will also help monitor the product itself, the demand and the supply of the product. And, uh, because if you zone the production facility and the dispensary, the retail facility, the medical marijuana facility in one place, it would be difficult to provide the complete security. And also, it will also be like, the zoning issues will be, in which sector, you'll have thirty-five-hundred square feet for the dispensary and then five-thousand square feet for the cultivation area, and then you require another area for disposal. So it would require a lot of land area that is, I don't think so that's convenient, that would be convenient for the city to actually monitor the growth of the industry as it grows from here to tomorrow. The separate, the, the issue about the twenty, the thirty-five-hundred square feet, I think so it should be decided that how much area should be specifically for the peoples, for the patients that they walk in, for the processing, and what kind of, uh, square footage is allowed for displaying their products in the facility. So they should, that should be more specified rather than thirty-five-hundred square feet because I have done research of fifty to hundred dispensaries and establishments around town, spending my own time and revenue to, um, to, to analyze their operations, that what weaknesses they have that we can incorporate, uh, we can actually move away from and actually incorporate a better structure where we can utilize information technology, uh, in today's age to monitor and track the product effectively and manage our patients and the demand and the supply of the product. So I think so, uh, creating an, an regulated environment where all these establishments are separate will create more jobs for, in, within the state, and will also, uh, help the state monitor this industry, which is just barely starting. We all are discussing, this is, this is history that we are making right here. So going on forward, we will take today, tomorrow, and two thousand and fourteen, sixteen, the recreational side of it, so we want to make sure that the growing operations are separate from the dispensary operations because one day, what if in two thousand and sixteen everything is recreationally allowed? So another point about the disposal and the distraction, I think so, every establishment, growing establishment should have a industrial grinder, um, in, in the establishments, or whatever the leftover, uh, material is, it can be grinded and then can be disposed off. So it's easier and convenient for them as well and for the city to monitor as well where the, uh, the leftover stuff is going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Real brief, ma'am, because you've also had your one shot.
Very brief. Vicki Higgins, two-oh-five Norland. I just wanted to, um, reiterate Mr. Gail's statement that three dispensaries will not be enough. We're not just supplying medicine for the patients of Nevada, which the numbers have increased exponentially just since June, when the session finished, but we are creating a medical, uh, the ability for our tourists to get our medicine when they come to Nevada, and they, we are talking about hundreds and thousands of tourists. If they have a card in their state, they can come to Nevada and get their medicine. We would like a portion set aside for the Nevada patients to make sure that when the supply runs out, that the tourists are demanding that we, as patients of Nevada, are covered. But we have to remember, we have patients from around the world coming to Nevada, and we're going to need a lot of medicine to supply their needs. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, sir. I'm the Chairman.
Good evening.
Sandra Tiffany, twenty-six-fifty-seven Windmill Parkway. And, uh, I have one, a comment and then a, a question. The co, the first comment is about limiting, uh, the dispensaries to ten, and of course, if you limit access, with, we just looked at the size of the districts you get voted in, these are a hundred and seventy thousand people per dispensary. Even your districts, you guys aren't elected, but the districts are even more people than that, that, you know, you're more people for the dispensary than you are even to get elected. So you're really limiting access. So that's one, limiting access. Plus, throw forty million tourists on top of that, you're really limiting access. And if you're worried about, uh, your waiting rooms, uh, not spilling out in front of the streets, then you, you really should have more access and more dispensaries. Um, and anytime that you limit competition, prices go up, and I don't think anybody wants our patients paying more money for, for their, their medicine. And that's what happens when you limit competition. Number three is, if the director is concerned about not maybe having enough direction on how to go through licensing and zoning, and they want to take it a little slower, well, there's how many states now that have already approved medical marijuana, and there's many models out there for you. I know when I was in the legislature and we wanted to look at a new bill, the first thing we did was we'd go to our national legislative, um, um, states and we'd say, "Okay, what did you do in this state and how did, can we implement it?" And then we'd model after that. So there's plenty of models if you're, if you're concerned about that. And, uh, ten was limiting to begin with. Three is really limiting. And this doesn't really pertain to you, but I just want to make the comment, and I'm not applying for a lab, but these labs are very, very expensive to build. And part of what they're considering is if they're going to put two or three million dollars in building a lab, they're also considering how many dispensaries are going to be open and how many patients they can expect. So as a business model, that's something that's very important. Now, here's the question, Director. If the state is ready to accept applications in June, and the city finishes their public hearing in May and are ready to accept applications, isn't there a little problem there that if, if the, if June is the timeframe for the state and we have, maybe we're just beginning here at the city, how do we, how do we coordinate those? Can he answer a question? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Hence the need for us to move very quickly on these because, again, we don't know exactly when the state is going to open their application period. They have indicated they don't have the staff currently to do that, so it may be later than June. We don't know. So again, that's one of the reasons why we have this before Planning Commission tonight, even though City Council just barely directed us last week to actually start working on the ordinance. So we're trying to move very quickly in doing this.
I was in Carson City Friday, and I actually was with the Health Department, and they got the money to hire people, and they are ready, I think they're going to be ready and maybe quicker than what you think. So I just think you have to think about something like that. Third part is, is are, is through your process, are you choosing three and then sending just three to the state? Or are you going to take maybe five in each sector and send the five to the state and tell the state they can choose the three? Because I'm concerned that if you limit it, you, you, the city decide to limit it to three, you don't have a merit-based system, you haven't decided on a lottery. I think that's kind of an issue. So have you, have you considered that?
Yes, we have considered the application process. State law requires that the, uh, medical marijuana facilities have local zoning approval first before they go to the state. In our conversations with the state, they said, "If you limit the number that you have in your jurisdiction, whether it be dispensaries, cultivation, et cetera, uh, they will then rank them." And if, for example, we send them three and we're allowed ten, then obviously we get the three back that have- three back that have already had zoning approval. So we are taking that into consideration as we look at both our...
So if they meet your zoning approval, you'll send it, in other words.
Exactly.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Good evening, ma'am. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Lizette Matos. Thank you all for being here tonight and for listening to all of our suggestions and our concerns. My only concern where limiting access is concerned to one specific area, if we're really considering the needs of the patients and being able to have access to medicine and we consider females and elderly that maybe are not comfortable going to an area where there's a bunch of strip clubs because of the type of business and the type of use that that is, that I think that that's something also that needs to be taken in consideration because sometimes those areas are areas that certain people don't feel comfortable going to in general, never mind to pick up medicine because these people are already, many of the patients already have, you know, chronic illnesses, they already have many, many challenges in life, maybe they have challenges with transportation. And definitely to add something more to make them feel that they're maybe, you know, going into an area that's not something that they would normally do on a daily life. If they can go to Walgreens and CVS in their neighborhood, then they should also be able to access their medicine in their neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will go ahead and, sir, I'm not going to have any more repeats now. Appreciate it. Seeing no other comments, I will now close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Anybody wish to go first? Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chairman, quite a few questions here. And I hate to keep saying that I seen a documentary, but I did this past weekend. This particular person had multiple sclerosis and he was jumping around so rapidly that it was kind of disturbing to see and after seeing him take this medicine, he calmed down immediately. And so I actually see the need for this and I'm glad this is in front of us so we can start offering stuff like this in our state. Saying that, the, and speaking to Director Fag, the vertical integration and the seed to sell, that's not up to us. That's going to be up to City Council. However, one question that I would have for the Director through the Chair is if it's the City Council's pleasure to allow a seed to sell, will our special use permits be set up properly with what we're doing today? And will we be able to give multiple special use permits for the same property?
Mr. Chairman, through you in response to Commissioner Schlotman. If City Council approves a model of seed to sale, then obviously what would need to be modified in the proposed zoning regulations is, as has been mentioned this evening, relative to the distant separation between facilities. City Council would need to remove that language. And then in terms of the special use permit, again, it depends on what City Council decides with the approval or the entitlement requirements for the individual uses. As has been suggested here this evening, perhaps the model is that a special use permit is required for just dispensaries and that the production facilities and cultivation facilities perhaps become conditional use. And there is some merit to that argument. That's not what we have before you this evening, but there is merit to that argument. I will agree with that. So if that's the case, again, state law does require them to be separate in a separate facility. And so the approval requirements might be different for the uses. If they all require a special use permit, because they are in separate facilities, all would still require a special use permit. Now, we would process those concurrently if they're a seed to sale operation, but there would be an individual approval for each separate location.
Thank you. And Chairman, if I may, I don't know what the correct answer is, vertical integration or if it's having separate facilities. I hear that there's over 600 types of marijuana and to think that one dispensary can produce even half of that is something unrealistic. So the arguments that a seed to sell is going to be safer and it's going to take away all of the other issues, you're still going to have the cultivators out there and the production companies to be able to supply all these. I won't beat that one up too much because that's not what we're considering here. Another thing, would this be land use decision as far as the size of the particular facilities?
Yes, that's what you have there in terms of the size. The minimum size is what we have in the language.
Okay. I don't know where the number come from. And I know that city staff actually did fly to Phoenix, I think Seattle and Denver. So they have seen a lot of this firsthand and found out what some of the best practices were. I don't understand why we would need a 5,000-square-foot production facility. Cultivation, absolutely. Because if you're going to be cultivating, it takes, I'm not an expert in marijuana, but I think it takes like three months to do a cultivation, four months. So they need the bigger facility. But the production, which is creating the edibles, I mean, we're basically creating a 5,000-square-foot kitchen that, where they can come in, produce whatever it is, and flip that crop right back out. So I don't know if 5,000 square feet would be appropriate or if we should look at a production facility being smaller, maybe 3,000 square feet.
Certainly. Again, we did look at a number of different facilities. Obviously cultivation does require adequate space in order to have different stages of the plants growing. In terms of the production facilities, you're correct that basically it is a commercial production kitchen. You also have some processing where they actually package the products there on site. So if you combine those two activities, both the kitchen and then the actual packaging, sometimes there is a need for additional room for those facilities. However, if you were to recommend that we modify that and decrease that square footage, certainly that's something that we can take forward to City Council.
Okay. Well, I'd love to hear from everybody else, but I do have a few more comments. One last comment on production. I don't know if I should give this to the city clerk or give this to Director Fag himself, but instead of limiting, and this isn't for us, but for City Council and for city staff to determine, instead of limiting all the components that the distillation and everything that a production company can actually produce, you might read that because there are other ways to distill products without using the butane and the flammable components. Maybe what y'all could do is look at just requiring them to have certain standards in place.
If I can just respond to that, Chair. That was one of the comments that we had at the workshop last week in terms of the language that we had proposed relative to distillation. We've looked at some potential language to address the extraction by solvent process that perhaps that is what is prohibited rather than the actual distillation itself. Because as you do mention, there are a number of different systems that are available that don't have the same dangers as the solvents. And so certainly we would consider modifying the language that we have there to address that.
Okay. Another question or point that I'd like to make is there is a 100-foot right-of-way required in front of, I think, all three of these dispensaries, the cultivation and production. And I agree with the dispensaries being on a 100-foot right-of-way. We don't want them on a 40-foot right-of-way, 60-foot, whatever our minimum size is. We would like to see them on a main street where police or whoever's going up and down the street can monitor what's going on. One of the problems with the production facilities and the cultivators, why I don't think that it should be 100-foot right-of-way is because there's a lot of warehouses and distribution plants and spread throughout a lot of our industrial areas, excuse me, that's not on the major right-of-way, but it's tucked off some of these side streets off of industrial or other areas. And since there's not going to be anybody going to these facilities, it might help to, and open up other, allowing other locations for these production and cultivation facilities. And then on the 300-foot distance separation versus 1,000-foot distance separation, I do understand why that was brought up. However, after y'all did your brief research, you've seen how much it restricted, you know, potential buildings. You couple that along with buildings having to be purchased and owned outright, coupled with all the other regulations, I think it might become difficult or impossible to find spaces here in this town. So maybe what we should be looking at is no smoking marijuana within 1,500 feet and that's, of course, up to City Council, not us. But allow them to put those kind of rules, the same that you would have on a convenience store, and not make it so restrictive where they have to be 1,000 feet away from the church. You know, I'll leave it right here. I might have one or two more comments, but I don't want to take up too much time. Thank you.
I'll be brief.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I think I spoke way too soon at the workshop about the 1,000 feet. I had a few of my friends in the communities that are lawyers as well as constituents call me and say, my God, Vicki Quinn, you don't want pot in Las Vegas. Well, I'm imagining like 70 or 90 or 300 or 500 licenses. I'm not thinking we're getting three or nine or 10. I'm thinking we're going to be like California, we're going to be like Oregon. And I don't want Ward 1 that I represent to have 70 of these places in a row. So when I said 1,000 feet separating them, it's because I didn't know we were getting three lousy licenses in the city or three in Boulder City and three, I'm thinking they're coming in in Groves. And, you know, I don't want you to say, well, you know, Commissioner Quinn, we have a strip club right next door, so what's another 50 feet? Well, you know what? Pretty soon they're lined up, as you know, Mr. Brown in the back there. And it's just, I didn't want Ward 1 to end up as the pot wart of like 70 in a row. So I spoke way too soon, number one. And my friend, Commissioner Truesdale, said to me today, Vick, you need to listen. Because I didn't listen. I spoke before I heard that we're getting three lousy licenses, really. So what happens when it opens up and there's 500, you know, licenses? I don't want those things piled up on Industrial Road, on Highland Avenue, where my councilwoman and I work so hard to keep that from being tattoo parlor after tattoo parlor after strip zone after strip zone. I mean, we take this ward very seriously and we don't want all of these pot stores dumped in our ward. But, I mean, what's wrong with three? I'm not sure. But we are so uninformed and we are so, this is coming on so fast. Do I believe in medical marijuana? Absolutely. I have a son that's a quadriplegic that's had 50 surgeries. That can't turn his neck. Are you kidding? I know all about pain. I live with it. But I just wanted to clear that up, that when I said 1,000 feet, I'm thinking we're getting 1,000 stores, not three. So for the record. The other thing is, I think it's very important, as lucky enough to be a second homeowner in the state of California, that when my neighbor's dying of cancer next door in San Diego and this little green van pulls up and delivers his pot, because there's no way, A, I don't have a card to go get it for him and B, he can't go get it. So I think delivery of this stuff is imperative because then the person doesn't pull on the street, roll the pot up, and then fly down high down the street. Because you might think everybody's taking this for medicine, that's a bunch of crap. You know that maybe some of them are, but in my opinion, we're, not everyone's going to be. Okay, so I'm going to leave it at that. But I wanted to make it perfectly clear to my friends that are attorneys that called me and said, you know, well, I'm thinking we're getting like 700 of these places, not three, right? So there you go. And I do believe they should be 1,000 feet from schools and I do believe they should be 1,000 feet from churches and I do believe they should be 1,000 feet where any child is going into a dance lesson. And I'll stand firm on that whether we have three or 300. So there you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins?
Thank you. I'm glad to see in the slide where we're going to have a little bit more public comment and I'm going to be real brief. I'm just looking at the 300 feet versus 1,000 feet from a school. And I don't know, Director, just like you did, the overlay of what 1,000 feet versus 300 feet would do, but have we done this to see what impact it would have on schools? And I'm just concerned that maybe is 300 feet enough distance from a school and what kind of perception does that create in some areas where schools are?
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond to that. In terms of the 1,000-foot distance separation from schools, that's actually in state law. That is not something that we can have a lesser requirement on. So that is something that is required in state law. The 1,000 feet from churches is not required in state law. In the actual language, it's only 300 feet from churches. But again, based on the comments that we heard at the workshop, we increase that distance. Just so that you're clear, also not required in state law is the 200-foot separation from residential. That is something that we added, but is not required. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
And just one quick comment. I think one thing we haven't looked at, and I represent Ward 5, and, you know, you basically break it down and say it's the hood. You know, I grew up where, you know, where this, what y'all planning has been going on for years. So I don't know why nobody, I don't know why nobody's gone into the underground and asked how it's done, how it's transported, because it's been moving through some communities. My community, Summerlin, it's been moving through a lot of communities through a transport system right now that seems to be working. So maybe we just need to look at that, maybe trademark it and get it going and that may be the system that may work because while we sitting here doing it legally, it's illegally working even better than we could imagine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Fisher Truesdale?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this. I'm having a real hard time with the idea of some of these distances that we're concerned about. If this is a medicine, like everybody is presenting here, why are these distances from homes a problem? Why are these distances from other businesses a problem? If this is the prelude to a recreational scheme that somebody feels is where we should be, then we need to tighten these down. Because you're going to have people, no matter what you do, this is going to be a runaway train. So if we're looking at land use for medicine, we should be looking at the same requirements we put on a pharmacy on the dispensary side. On the production side, they need to be in industrial areas. They don't need to be in the center of our town. And if this, if this license or this ordinance goes through and the city goes this way, if there is a seed to sale environment, I guarantee the municipalities will lose absolute control and no one will know where this is going. And it won't matter how far you're from a school or a play yard, it's going to be everywhere. We have some legitimate distances set by the state. They crafted this law and we should be looking at a land use plan that takes the state law into account. And then our local jurisdiction should be able to identify who should be running those facilities and where they should be. And so I think this, we're given a task to do an ordinance here for land use. And I don't want to see this clustered in a two-square-block area in the Arts District. I've gotten several letters from people saying that would be the death of the redevelopment agency. I don't know if that would or not. Don't really, that's not my issue here. I'm not sitting here taking this medicine 24 hours a day or, I have no concept of how much is enough. I'm not sitting here taking this medicine 24 hours a day, or I have no concept of how much is enough. But I hear the comments here, and it's like, the more the merrier. I can't believe, how much can we produce? We got every community, every home builder, or every home neighborhood in this valley got growhouses going, and no one's been able to make a dent in it. And, but this is going to solve that, because we're going to be able to license a few of them and regulate a few of them. And in that regard, we should be doing this. We should be proactive. We shouldn't be at the mercy of a bunch of gangsters wanting to sell pot to kids, you know? It is a felony. This, I mean, this is a federal crime that people seem to keep forgetting here. And our state legislators have dumped it onto the city and the county to deal with a felony, a federal crime. So, in that regard, I think the staff has done an incredible job of coming up with an ordinance that the city council should review and make a decision with regards to our community. And there's one thing in here that I didn't understand. In reading this, I read it three or four times, where we talk about a distance from childcare with 12 children. We have distance separations in our code all the time. And we will give a special use permit for a tavern, let's say. And six months later, a preschool will open up. And that preschool doesn't have the same distance limitations. But if we're going to look at this honestly, and we're concerned about these distances, if we give somebody a permitted location, we should draw a circle around and restrict, so we don't allow daycare or facilities in that area. So we aren't contributing to the problem that we're concerned about now, but at once this ordinance goes into place, we forget about. We do it with billboards, we do it with taverns, we do it with other things. If we're going to say Maine and Maine is the place for a permit, then within that distance of Maine and Maine, we should not allow a license for these protected uses that we don't want near these dispensaries. I think that's a more, that's an honest approach to this that we would have. But at the end of the day, we have great codes with regards to special use permits. I think every one of these uses need to have a special use permit. Right now, there's a small few that are concerned about how this works out. Every one of these that opens up will bring more and more people out saying, "I've experienced this in my area," because of it or not because of it. So I think having the special use permit is a critical issue for what we do. And these are medical facilities, these are dispensaries. If the state legislature feels it in their wisdom to go and change our laws again and throw the doors open like Colorado and experience the problems that Colorado is having, it's not a perfect world up there. Forget that part. If they do that, then we need to look at these locations again. And not just say, what is good for a medical location suddenly is the same situation with, you know, a party house. So those are things that are concerns to me. The fact that we're being asked to create a code for what is, everybody in this room will say, it's a federal crime. So I don't mind doing my job as a planning commissioner, but I do take it seriously not to step over the line and participate in federal crimes, because honestly, I like my freedom. I like my livelihood. And I felt it was important to make the comments about distance and comments about the facilities as a whole. Because this ordinance should go forward. The city of Las Vegas, for once in our lives, should be the absolute leader on this and telling the world how we want it done. And that's why I want this, I think this should go forward. But based on the discussion we had at the beginning of the meeting, I will abstain on the final vote of this ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bonar?
Well, carry on with that same tone, just a couple of things. Every tourist that comes here is not a medical patient. Every resident in this valley is not a medical patient. We shouldn't be advertising this as something we're going to take or allow them to take it across the state line. I don't want to be the supplier for 49 other states, thanks, and a couple territories and neighboring countries. No thanks. I don't think our distances are out of order. I think we want as few of these as we test the waters as we can have. Three's fine with me, up to 10, I suppose, but certainly not 100. I think this audience, and whoever's even watching for that matter, deserves a reprimand for thinking that this is already recreational use. Shame on us. This is medical, and our standards that we're setting should be medical. If it's to change, let it be through referendum. As for distances, once we set them on the medical, no variances. I'd like to add that to the language. No variances. We get variances on every other category that we do in a land use, use permits, no variances. Whatever we set them at, none. Secondly, I've been convinced that bonded transport of the product, if there's going to be medical product, should be allowed in some fashion. Bonded transport.
Is that for delivery, Commissioner?
Pardon?
Your bonded transport, is that for delivery?
For delivery of the medical marijuana, yes. I, for one, am not going to be inclined to make the inevitability that I think most of the people in this room have already assumed happen. We're talking medical marijuana, period. That's the end of my tirade.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
No comment.
Thank you.
The... We're here tonight on a land use issue, and a land use issue only. And not really here to pontificate as to whether or not this is a good law, bad law, or whatever the case may be. And, you know, we've got, you know, we've got like Commissioner Truesdale with a federal type of licensing which makes this difficult for him. You've got Commissioner Moody and myself who have law licenses. You have folks who are laymen on this, who are worried about dealing what ostensibly is a felony. We did talk about a preamble tonight, but I don't want to, you know, think that we're trying to hide behind a preamble, because we're not. The preamble there is to just really put our intent and the purpose of what we're doing out here. Now, the one thing that's really been bothering me about this whole thing is the facade of medical marijuana. I disagree with Commissioner Bonar. I think this is an intermediate step to get to Colorado, no if, ands, or buts. And we keep playing, you know, we keep going with the facade. We're here to take care of patients, and we're going to take care of, and this, all due respect to your comments, but we keep talking, we're going to take care of patients that are coming to Las Vegas as tourists and the like. And I just can't, in my mind, fathom there's that many patients out there. So let's put the facade aside and talk about what we're really doing here. And what we're really doing here is, you know, this is an intermediate step. And I think right now, we're going to be starting to put in some ordinances together that are going to really take us into it if the legislature should decide to go the Colorado route. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm really torn on how we're dealing with this issue. I mean, I'm torn internally. I'm not comfortable with the hypocrisy that's what we're doing. And quite frankly, we're being, it's total hypocrisy. And that's really not what we're here to discuss, whether it is hypocrisy. But the reason I bring this up is because now, if we're going to put an ordinance together with suggestions going to the city council, let's look ahead. And when I say look ahead, I don't think we can treat this as a general, like a pharmacy, and put it in every neighborhood. I just don't believe we can do that. I don't believe that, you know, as Commissioner Quinn said, that we can put it all in one area over there and dump it all in Ward One. Because I don't think that's a good idea either. I think what we have to do is just have sensible, you know, things on here. One of the complaints was the distance requirement between cultivation facilities and production facilities and the dispensaries. The argument makes sense, that maybe we don't want that much traveling going on with the product in there. But on the other hand, the places where you can place these are different. I don't, you know, I think you could probably, if it meets the distance requirement, put this in a C2 zoning, which is proposed for a dispensary. But quite frankly, a cultivation facility or a production facility needs to go in an industrial area. You know, that's just my opinion on this. With that said, and I could go on for a long time about this. You know, I am by no stretch in favor of marijuana, and I'll go on record on that. But the law is the law, what we have, and we're here to get a land use issue solved. With that said, I've listened to the comments, and this is my opinion on what we should be, what we should be looking at. If we're going to have a production facility, then distillation should be allowed, and the ordinance should read something to define a system which makes sense, okay? Obviously, we don't want to be using benzene and things like that. So obviously, I don't think a blanket prohibition against distillation's a good idea. The 100-foot right-of-way requirement, we've heard that discussed tonight, and I think the dispensary should be on there. I can't remember who it was, I think it was Commissioner Slotman, was talking about, you're going to get more patrol officers moving up and down 100-foot arterial. So that makes sense to me. The thing that I haven't seen addressed in the ordinance is the things we address in liquor licensing and convenience stores. Can't have people sitting out there in the parking lot smoking. We don't allow people in a convenience store to drink beer out in the parking lot. In fact, we have denied licenses in front of this board, excuse me, not licenses, but special use permits of individual stores who've had a problem with people out there drinking in their parking lots. So I think the ordinance has to say something there. I completely agree with Commissioner Bonar about bonded transport. And I think Commissioner Bonar's comment as far as bonded transport was for delivery to individuals. And when I say delivery to individuals, this is something that's troubling to me, too. I, you know, there are people in our community which this may have, may have a legitimate use. And those are the folks, you know, that, you know, my brother is a cancer survivor. And, you know, and if somebody has that, and they need it, and they're bedridden or they're limited in their mobility, I think there needs to be a mechanism on there, and it needs to be a licensed and bonded type of mechanism. The, a lot of comments were made about trying to put this all under one roof. And if, Director, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can't pursue a state statute on this. Each one of these has to be a standalone building. So trying to put this under one roof isn't going to work, you know, our hands are tied on this. I absolutely agree with Commissioner Truesdale. There should be no issue about this requiring an S U P. That's just a no-brainer, in my opinion, that you just, you know, I've heard comments tonight, again, with all due respect to the position taken, whether it's a dispensary or a production facility or cultivation facility, you should have to have an S U P. As to the distances, there's some of them that you cannot, you absolutely cannot change. We could buy state statute, you know? I mean, we can make the distances greater, but we can't shrink them. So as far as 1,000 foot from a school, regardless of whether, you know, that's mandated by state, regardless of whether it's mandated by state, that needs to stand. And quite frankly, I wouldn't even mind seeing more feet from a school. From a residential area, I think what we need to look at, as far as a residential area and distances there, it should coincide with a tavern. You know, we don't put taverns right up there next to a residential area. I don't think the dispensary should just be put up right next to the residential areas. We've got in there as proposed 300 feet, which is kind of what the state says for different things. I would like to just see an increased distance from a community recreational facility or a city park. You know, I don't like, I live up in Summerlin, let's say Betty Wilson. A lot of y'all are familiar, we're teaching kids how to play soccer, you know, we're trying to teach them sportsmanship. I don't think it makes sense to have a dispensary within 300 foot of that. And so, I could go on all night on my comments on this. The bottom line is, right now, to, again, echo what Commissioner Truesdale said, we need to, we need to get this, you know, done tonight as far as our recommendations and send it forward to the city council, so that we're leading the way and not lagging on this. Because I think the more we lag, the more, I think we have to be completely proactive and not reactive. And I, sorry to bore everybody at the comments, but that's just what I feel on this. With that said, does any other commissioners have anything to say on this? If not, I'll entertain motions.
Chairman, before you make a motion, just two more questions. Testing laboratories is own, or independent testing laboratory is a different special use permit, or is that not?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What we have proposed is it would not require a special use permit, that a testing laboratory would fall under our existing category of laboratory. So no public hearing process would be required.
And Chair, Chair through you to the Director, would one of these dispensaries be able to have their own laboratory, so they can test their own products before heading out?
Mr. Chairman, the language in the state law is it actually has to be an independent testing laboratory, so I don't believe that the state law would allow that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And I apologize, I had one more comment as far as distance separations. I think from the ordinance, we should limit the 1,000 feet between a cultivation facility, a production facility, and a dispensary. You know, I, there may be situations where that might be beneficial not to have such distance requirements. And now, I'll entertain a motion from...
Chairman, I'll try to draft a motion as best as I can, taking into consideration a lot of our colleagues' comments, and we'll see where this goes.
You know, I'm thinking on this, instead of you throwing one big giant motion together, maybe we should just break it up into individual components.
Mr. Chairman, I think that would be reasonable, based on the comments that I've heard from the planning commissioners.
So, for example, right now, let's start with the distance requirements. And why don't you make a motion on each specific distance requirement that differs from, or just make your motions on the distance requirements first.
Okay. And one comment about the distance requirements. The distance requirement from a tavern to residential is at zero. So the problem with putting 300-foot distance separation from residential would be, what if it's a big shopping center, and there's a community behind it? And it takes, it's 1,000 feet, the way that somebody walks to get over to that residential community. So having a huge residential distance separation might hinder certain dispensaries from going into a shopping center. into a shopping center that backs up to a residential community. I'll take a chance at, or stab at crafting this. So for distance separations, I would make a motion to follow the state's regulations, which are currently 1,000 feet from schools, 300 from churches, and I think it's from parks and community centers. And then also having 1,000-foot separation between a cultivation, production, and a medical marijuana dispensary. That is my motion.
You know, I'm going to probably limit your motion to, let's just do one distance requirement at a time.
Okay.
Because I can just see that's going to take us all night if you, if we throw all these in one motion and back and forth.
I can appreciate that.
So, you know, the, I think right now, the, why don't you begin with the school, whether the 1,000 feet is mandated by state statute is adequate?
Can I ask you to withdraw the motion?
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to withdraw your motion, if you don't mind.
Chairman, I will withdraw the last motion that I made.
Okay, and let's do each distance requirement one by one. And that way, we don't, I hate to have you put all that on the record, and then we got debate on it again, and it doesn't pass.
Perfect.
So let's start with the schools.
So, in regards to schools, I would make a motion to follow state's requirements or recommendations for 1,000-foot separation from any school.
1,000 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go have a vote on that. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I'm going to, out of an overabundance of caution, abstain as well. I just, you know, I deal with the federal government, I don't have any federal license and anything, but I deal with a lot of federal funding that comes down from the Fed to the state, and I just think out of an abundance of caution, I'll abstain on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to approve a 1,000-foot separation between facilities and a school passes, noting the abstentions of Commissioner Goines, Commissioner Moody, and Commissioner Truesdale. Let's do residential.
Chairman, through you. One of the concerns that I had a minute ago, I'm sorry, I'm a little sick tonight, was if there was a... Chairman, I'd like for you to hear this.
I'm listening.
Since you had the comments on residential. The problem is, that I see with residential separation, is that if it's a major shopping center, and we measure our distance requirements as the crow flies from property line to property line, and let's say it's the Walmart shopping center on Decatur and Charleston, and we put a medical marijuana dispensary in there, 50 feet behind that is residential, but it would take you over 1,000 feet to get to it. So putting the medical, or putting the regulation on the residential, I'll throw a, I'm just going to say, I would like to follow the same regulations that we follow for taverns, and there's no distance separation from residential. And I think that is similar to what the state's proposing. Is that correct? So my motion would be to have a zero-foot distance separation from residential, so it follows state regulation, what we often do with our taverns. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Certainly, Commissioner Bonar.
If the preponderance is leaning, as most people seem to think, and that is adopted, and then that same location, one of these first three or 10, happens to be zero from residential, but they go to recreational sale, what does that do to that outlet? I'd rather do a bunch of caution at this time, distance-wise, rather than opening it up.
Chairman, through you. And I do acknowledge that, so I would say in certain circumstances, that's a very valid point, so maybe we need to look at some minimal distance separation from residential. I just wish we counted residential not as a bird flies, we count it the distance separation, you know, with how far it actually takes to walk and enter a pedestrian gate. Because if there was something along those lines, and I don't know if we have the ability to do that on this distance separation, but then I'd be comfortable with a 200, 200 or 300-foot distance separation.
If I could take a stab at answering your question. One, I don't know the answer. I guess the shortest answer is, if recreational ever became desirable and legal under Nevada law, you could revisit all these laws, or you could treat them all as medical, same way, you'd have that choice. Second, I would highly advise against measuring distances by way of walking. In the past, we actually did that. We had a strip club here in town that was about 20, 30 feet short of the 1,000-foot distance separation, and what they did is they built the yellow brick road, made you wander a snake-type path, creating the extra 30 feet to get you there. And so unfortunately, that, it sounds good in theory, but in practicality, a lot of people find ways around that that aren't what you intend.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to echo what the city attorney has said in terms of how we measure the distance separation between uses. He already explained that we have some history with doing it a different way, and we've had some problems with that. I think it's also critical that in terms of distance separations, we be consistent throughout our code, and the way that we measure for other protected uses, alcohol, financial institution specified, is property line to property line. So I would caution against developing a different standard for medical marijuana. What you might want to do is, rather than looking at 200 feet, maybe reduce that down to 100 feet. I don't know, that's just a suggestion.
The problem is, if we put the distance separation on even at 100 feet, even at 20 feet, every property up and down Charleston, every property up and down Sahara, every property up and down Decatur, every major street backs up to residential, we won't be able to have a medical marijuana dispensary in this town. I'm not going to say there's, not going to be any location, but it's going to be extremely difficult.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, there is a provision, the proposed ordinance was modeled after our tavern ordinance, and there is a provision to create a fee simple parcel of a property that has its own access to a 100-foot right-of-way, that's where the 100-foot right-of-way is, in order to gain a distance separation from the protected uses. The tavern ordinance was amended that way a few years ago to allow that. Previously, the tavern ordinance didn't allow you to create a parcel to avoid distance separations. We instituted a program to where you could create one, one that has its own access, fronts a 100-foot public right-of-way, and can be done through a commercial subdivision, because that's a free, a fee interest parcel. So you could create a parcel within the subdivision that would then be measured from the fee interest parcel line to the parcel line of the protected use. So there is a way to do that. We have a few taverns who have opted to do that, not many in recent history, but there are two or three out there that exist today that have done that, created their own parcel to address that situation where you have a large commercial subdivision that abuts residential or a protected use. So that is in the ordinance as proposed, that you could do that. So there are ways to do that, if one so desired.
But if, and Chair through you, if we create that fee simple lot, or whatever we're calling this, are we still measuring, are we measuring from the front property line or parcel line, and we're not measuring from the rear? Or it's the entire parcel that we're creating that we'll be measuring from?
Within the code itself, you measure from the new fee parcel line. And if a fee parcel line can be created through a commercial subdivision, you could do an actual parcel map, but that creates other issues. So you would measure from the new parcel, but that parcel has to have its own access to a 100-foot right-of-way. You couldn't create one in the middle of the parcel of the commercial subdivision and then measure from there. You've got to have kind of your own parcel that functions on its own, but really isn't its own for other situations. So you could do that.
If we create that parcel and that building backs up to a residential area, the fee parcel line, it's on all four sides, right? Or just the front along the right-of-way?
Well, it would be, it would be the closest fee parcel line to the protected use, is what you would measure from. So you could, you know, conceivably, you would then have the medical marijuana establishment would be furthest away from the residential use or the protected use.
I'll go ahead and throw it out here, we'll see where it goes, and let somebody else make a motion to the contrary.
I appreciate you trying to get these motions done.
Yes. So on the text amendment 52502, in reference to distance separations from residential, I just don't see, I just see this cutting out every major street in our town, so I'll have to say my motion's to make it a zero-foot distance separation from residential, following state law and following our tavern limited rules and regulations. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion carries 3 to 1 to have a, with noting the abstentions of Commissioners Moody, Truesdale, and Goines.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to make a technical correction for the record. On this body, it takes four to pass a motion on a 3-1 vote. It will go as a recommendation of 3 to 1 to the council, but it will not go as a passed motion.
Okay, thank you. And a correction on that. Okay, I think the next distance requirement that's at issue has to do with the distance requirements between the production facilities, cultivation facilities, and the dispensaries. Does anybody care to make a motion pertaining to those? Mr. Slotman?
Hearing what everybody has said up here, and I know everybody doesn't agree with us out in the audience, but I say we follow what staff has put together, which is 1,000-foot distance separation between each of the cultivation, production, and dispensaries. And that would be my motion.
Mr. Chair, if I might just clarify, the motion does not require a distance separation between cultivation and production. It only requires the separation between dispensaries and production or cultivation.
Okay, I'll modify my...
No, I'm just clarifying, that's what you meant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please post. This appears to be a 2-2 vote, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goines, Moody, and Truesdale. I guess this will go forward to city council as a non-recommendation, is that correct, Mr. Gerbert?
That's correct. For Chairman, on certain items that don't pass, would it be appropriate to, for you to craft a motion opposite?
By our bylaws, I can't craft a motion. I can suggest motions, and I'm not allowed to make one by our bylaws.
Somebody who voted in the minority, if you wish to do it, if you think there's some point in doing it, can. Remember, this is just a recommending body when it comes to this, and it will go to the council reflecting a 2-2 vote, unless you want to take another vote.
Commissioner Quinn, I think you were one of the no votes on this. Do you wish to craft another motion, or just allowed to go to the city council?
I'd like it to go to city council, I'll just...
Thank you. Now, I don't believe, are there any more distance issues? Okay, I think we got parks, community centers, that was one of the things I mentioned earlier. I think we, right now, we have 300 foot. So I'd like to hear a motion on that portion there from somebody.
Mr. Chairman, on TXT 52502, I'd like to make a motion to follow state's recommendations of distance separations of 300 feet between parks, daycares, what was the other?
I think we were just talking right now about parks and recrea, community recreational facilities.
Parks and recreation.
We're not talking about daycare yet.
Okay.
Please post. The vote again is 2 to 2, noting the abstentions of Commissioner Goines, Moody, and Truesdale.
I'll take a stab at a revote on this one.
Would you care to craft a new motion on that?
I'd like to craft a motion of text amendment 52502 for the distance separation from parks, and what was the other one?
Recreational facilities.
Parks and recreation facilities be the 1,000 feet, the same as the schools.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The vote is 3 to 1, noting the abstentions of Commissioner Goines, Commissioner Moody, and Commissioner Truesdale. This will go forward as a recommendation only, and it does not carry. And I think the last distance that's at issue has to do with daycare centers for more than 12 children. Do I have a motion on that?
What?
I'm sorry, Chair, what was that?
It has to do, is the distance requirement for a daycare center with 12 or more children, or just a daycare center in general.
What state regulations?
It's 300 feet by state.
I'll make a motion on TXT 52502 to follow state's recommendations of 300 feet on the daycare facility.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. That's a 2 to 2 vote, again, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goine, Moody, and Truesdale. Commissioner Quinn, do you want to craft a different motion?
I do. I want to craft a different motion for text amendment 52502, that the distance separation from a daycare facility would be 1,000 feet, like a... from a daycare facility would be 1,000 feet like a school or a park. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The vote is three to one. This will go forward only as a recommendation, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Byron, Goines, and Commissioners Truesdale and Moody. I think we have one more distance, unless I'm not mistaken, that has to do with churches.
The state's regulations on churches is currently 300 feet? Okay. And let me just state what my reason is for these distance separations. The state has already put a lot of thought into this. They've already looked into distance separations for all, all of these components. And for us to go in and put 1,000 feet on a daycare from whatever on residential, on all these different uses, we might as well just say that we don't want these in our, our town. I do respect everybody's opinion up here, but that is one of the reasons why I'm wanting to follow the state's recommendations. These dispensaries aren't for people to go get their marijuana and smoke it out front. They should get their medical, medical marijuana and take that medicine home and do what, do what they do. Well, we put, we put, we put liquor stores right next to daycares. We put liquor stores, you know, with shorter distance regulations. So that's one of my reasons, and I want that on the record. It's not that I want it close to a church, or close to residential, or close to any of these uses. I want to follow state regulations because we won't be able to have these in certain parts of the city. So with that being said, we're on churches, house of worship. On TXT 52502, I would make a motion to follow state's recommendation of 300 feet from a house of worship.
Thank you, Commissioner. The vote is three to one, noting the abstentions of Commissioner Goines, Moody, and Truesdale. This will go forward as a recommendation. The motion doesn't carry because we don't have the requisite four votes. And Commissioner Sloman, I agree with what you're saying, except with everything when it had to do with separation with children. That was the only, the only, what places I differed with you on.
I appreciate that.
And I believe that covers all the distance requirements for this, for this proposed ordinance. I think another issue had to do with minimum sizes of the facilities. And I think there was an issue with the, I think everybody was okay with the cultivation facility size, but I think the issue was the size of a production facility. So I'll entertain a motion on that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on TXT 52502, I would make a motion to reduce the size, as currently stated, from 5,000 to 3,500 square feet, as I don't feel that those, that large of a production facility would be needed. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. The vote is three to one. This is, the motion doesn't carry, however, it goes as a recommendation, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goines, Moody, and Truesdale. I think the next issue that was, was distillations.
And Chairman, through you, a question for Director Fag. What are we actually voting on, on distillations? Because I think most of those items would be handled by Title VI.
Actually, we had language in the land use that prohibited distillation processes. What might be easiest for you all as a motion to craft is basically to just state something along the lines that prohibition for extraction by solvent, and then allow staff to develop that language as we forward that to City Council.
Okay. So Chairman, through you.
You accept his recommendation for a motion?
Yes, I do.
All right, I'll make it easy on you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goines, Moody, and Truesdale. Another issue, Commissioner, I think, was the distances for how far away from the facility you need to be before you can consume the product.
That would be. Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt. The language relative to where you can consume the product is actually in state law and is not something that we need to cover as part of our land use regulation. So I would discourage you from going down that path.
Okay, makes sense.
One of the things that we might want to address, because there has been some question and comments about it, is the proposal for limiting the number of dispensaries to three with one in each of the three sectors. So what I might request is that you, as members of the Planning Commission, vote on that item separately.
Are, are we limiting to three, or are we just starting with three?
For the purposes of this ordinance, you're starting with three.
Chairman, through you, a question for Director Fag. Would it be possible for us to craft some sort of motion that stated a maximum for, for per sector, not to exceed 10 in town? That way, if, because I listened to the City Council meeting, and it sounded like they didn't want to lose them. And Tex Seggerblum got up here and said that we could lose them if we don't use them. And I think I heard you say the same. So can we approve or send it to them with, with a maximum of 10? And then if they so choose to only issue three licenses, then that's their call.
Certainly, you can craft a motion to that effect.
If I could suggest, if you're comfortable with just the three sectors, a motion could be to have approved 10, no more than four per sector. So one will get four and two will get three, and they'll have to decide which one it is. Or if you want to abandon the whole sector idea, you could, but.
I, I would kind of like to hear what my other Commissioners have to, have to say about the sectors, and also, is putting them into three sectors the right, right strategy? Or should we look at putting them? Well, it'd be kind of hard to put them in Ward since we have six. I'd like to hear my colleagues' ideas on this.
What I've heard tonight is, I'm not sure any Commissioner nor any Councilman wants all 10 of these in their sector. You know, that's just what I'm kind of hearing at this juncture right now. Definitely, we've heard it from Ward One with Commissioner Quinn. And so what I've heard Mr. Jerbick say to me personally makes sense to maybe, you know, put it in the three sectors, maybe say no more than five in any one sector, or four, however you want to craft it.
Okay. I, I think I would stick with the four because that would balance them out a little bit better. So the motion on TXT 52502 in regards to the sectors and quantities allowed would be the three sectors that the planning department and planning staff has identified with a maximum of four in any one sector, not to exceed 10 citywide.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goines, Moody, and Truesdale. Unless the Commissioners have any other specific line item that they feel needs to be voted upon, I think, I think we've covered the issues, and I probably can entertain a motion to approve the remaining text, the remaining text of the ordinance, proposed ordinance.
I, I have one, but I'll let Commissioner Bonar go first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we abandon the license and bonded delivery?
Oh, you're right. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond to that. In terms of a license and bonded delivery, that's something that we would handle under Title VI in the Business Licensing Code rather than the Land Use Code. And we'll make sure that that's part of the minutes from the meeting this evening that we forward on to the City Council as part of that process. And we do appreciate that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to verify that the way the ordinance is written right now, that every facility requires an SUP. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion now to approve the remaining text of the proposed ordinance.
Chairman, one more item before we.
Certainly.
We, we approve the entire ordinance. I made a comment about, you know, the 100-foot right-of-way is sufficient for a dispensary because that'll put it on a major street and not in some little back alley. But I made a recommendation of the production facilities and the cultivating facilities reducing the right-of-way, because there's a lot of these industrial areas with little side streets, and they're not going to have customers go into their, their place of business. And so it, it might make sense to reduce the right-of-way down to 60, a 60-foot right-of-way for just the production and, and the cultivation, so it's not limiting a lot of the, the locations. And kind of gets them off the main street and then to these industrial areas.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to Commissioner Sloman's request. If you would like to craft the motion in the effect that dispensaries require frontage on 100-foot right-of-way and not requiring the frontage requirement for cultivation and production, that would be the simplest way perhaps to frame that motion.
Would, would you like me to do that all in one swoop for three different?
Well, do you, do you accept that as a motion is recommended by Director Fag?
Sure. The 60-foot, it is a 60-foot right-of-way for production and, and cultivation per my motion, and the 100-foot per, per the dispensary.
Is that your motion?
That, that is my motion. Thank you.
Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goines, Moody, and Truesdale. And the, I know this is going to raise, it's going to come up, is hours of operation. I believe that's going to be covered with the licensing code. Is that correct, Director?
Yes, we are going to address hours of operation in the licensing code.
Okay, I think now anybody, anybody, any other Commissioners have a specific issue pertaining to the text. Okay, Commissioner Sloman, do you want to have the, make the motion that the remaining portions of the text is good to go?
I would love to. Chairman, through you on item 55, TXT 52502, I would make a motion that all remaining items of this text amendment get approved.
I'm assuming you're saying you're approving the remaining portions of the text as set forth?
Yes.
With the exceptions of what we have dealt with individually?
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Goines, Moody, and Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form, and let me just say I appreciate all the input and discussion from the Planning Commission members as well as the general public. This has been a rather lengthy process this evening, but I know City Council does appreciate your effort and thoughtfully considering these issues, so thank you.
I have to say, in six years, this had to be the hardest vote for me, but most importantly, the way that your staff and you've worked on it, Flynn, is amazing, and the way Trinity crafted it. I mean, I got to tell you, I'm glad I wasn't the chairman tonight. You outdid yourself, sir. Thank you.
Good job to the staff as well. Awesome job. Item number 56 is TXT 52680, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC Chapter 1912 related to the mixed use by revising the applicability in the C-PB Planned Business Park District and to provide for other related matters. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the Unified Development Code, the CPB Planned Business Park District was deleted. Subsequently, it was added back to the Unified Development Code, and when it was added back, the mixed-use requirement was inadvertently removed. And this, or, this change in the ordinance would allow the mixed use as an option, as a special use permit within the CPB Planned Business Park, to provide for residential uses within the, the Business Park zoning district. And staff does recommend an approval of returning that, as it makes good urban planning sense to allow mixed uses close together.
Thank you. Do any Members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, if there's no comment, I'd make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please proceed. Please post. Motion carries. Item number 57, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is, is allowed, may be limited.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, RA 17732505. That's my service number. And I wish that my squad could come and see what you guys did today, sucking up to a stupid Attorney General. Afraid of big government? Because they're going to take your license, you're afraid of your licenses? And you'd add, you would sacrifice your freedoms for that? I suggest you go home and read the third verse of the Star Spangled Banner.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, or any, anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.